Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are live and ready.
Okay, yes, thank you, and it's not going to be very long, I'll just take about five minutes. So I wanted to just give you this little drawing, which is a little expansion on what the original drawing was like, which you guys probably don't even remember. So this is just a little vision that I had. That being said, I know we voted on this project, but I know that most of you don't really support it. That you would rather get rid of them. So my thoughts are, since this year, we didn't have any luck with them whatsoever. I think because of the way they look, and I'm the first one to admit, wasn't real smart to get that look, but we've got it. And the environment around that, going back to what Jeremiah says, I drive by there every day and see all that. And it just doesn't look very nice. So I think all in all, people have not been very receptive to them for one. And plus, we've had a lot of controversy about them in the beginning. So anyway, I suggest, before someone brings it up to put on the agenda, I would like to see this project go one more year. I'm willing to put a few dollars of my own money and a volunteer to kind of spiffy the place up. There's nothing I can do about the lake. Hopefully, the guys can do something about that. But I can do things just, you know, around the little kiosks to make them look a little bit better. Decorate them or whatever. And I've been trying to think of how I could change the roof line, but so far, I haven't come up with anything that I could afford and that we could do. Now, I do know we have a little bit of money in the budget left, and I would at least like to see the city do either steps or a ramp. And Jeremiah, when you did the ramp downstairs in the apartment, was it very difficult?
No.
Okay, how long did it take, do you think?
Probably six, I don't know, six hours or so, six, eight hours.
And it would be something, and we've talked to the guys, you know, about this a long time ago. It could be either steps or a ramp that you could obviously take off and on, you know, so it would not be permanent. So and then if we don't have any luck with them next year, after we maybe spiffy them up a little bit, do a little bit more advertising, I don't know, then I suppose Plan B would be to sell them. So anyway, that's my spiel, I could go on and on, but I won't. So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from council? John, go ahead.
Yeah, Bobby, I I like your picture here. I think it's a start. The bad luck was the COVID years when we brought them out. And this year wasn't really the greatest year either. But I think they will, hopefully, maybe next year, somebody will rent one and things will start moving. But times aren't very well for people traveling and doing stuff. But I would love to see something like this in the end because it means more, more money and more, more business in town. It's a start. And I really do hope one of them rents. Thank you.
George, did you have some?
I just wanted to say, Bobby, I have made a lot of comments. I'd like to clarify my position a little bit. I don't, I'm not against the things, I don't think they should just go away. I'd certainly love to see them generate some, some revenue. I know that was, that was the whole idea. I think waiting another year is, is perfectly reasonable. We're not, I mean, they're paid for at this point. Hopefully, we could, without spending a whole lot of money, enhance them to the point where, where somebody'd be interested. And, and also, I pile on with what John said, COVID is what killed them. I think we were in a lot better shape financially when these things were conceived and, and the future looked a lot different. And so that was a problem. We'll see, maybe we can come up with some other ideas and, and if nothing else, we did manage to get power to the pavilion out of this whole deal, so it's, it's not a total loss. Anyway.
And the buildings will have electricity if we end up selling it.
Sure.
That's going to be huge. So.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, Bobby, this drawing is really cute. I'm not sure if we actually have this actual picture in our minds, but it's beautiful. I think the comments I've heard are absolutely correct. And I'm wondering if maybe soliciting the Chamber and see if they would do some advertising for us. The Chamber advertised that we have these buildings for us and get the word out to other businesses elsewhere or whatever. There might be some kind of facilitation there. The money that's going to take to finish the building, so they're not completed, I think there's still some work that needs to be done on them yet.
There's a couple of little things left to do.
Yeah, and I appreciate you, and if you decorate and do landscaping, it's going to be gorgeous and cute, I know that without a doubt, Bobby. I think the ADA ramp is a necessity, without a doubt. And the funny thing is, all summer long, I see tons of people remarkably on their bicycles or walking with backpacks on, and they stop, they go in there and they peek in the window, and I'm thinking, what are they looking for? Are they looking for lodging? Are they looking to bunk themselves for the night? And that's what I kept on thinking. But I think giving it another year and really get out there and solicit entities that may want to use the buildings is the only way that's going to happen. And maybe the Chamber would be the champion of doing that, of course, they're helping us. But I appreciate your efforts, Bobby.
And we need some different signage too. I'm looking, I'm going to be looking into that. Yeah, I've looked into it already and, yeah, just something that, because right now, people don't know what they are.
Right, 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 yeah. So, yes, some other sign that helps us talk about it, yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vivian. Anyone else on council with comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yep, go ahead, Purley.
Yeah, the, I certainly would like to see them buildings take off and, and do something here. And, and as far as the roof goes, relatively inexpensive. Put a false front on it. Do like the old cow towns, I mean, they were just buildings just like this, but had a false front on them.
Well, I've, I've thought about that.
Yeah, those are my thoughts, thanks.
I'm still trying to figure that out. There's a lot to be said about that because what I was thinking you could do adds about, I don't know how many feet to it, and that's going to look stupid, so.
Well, you're, you're not listening to what Purley's saying. A false front adds no, no feet to it. It's, it's false. It's, it's a couple inches thick. That Purley knows exactly what I'm talking about, and I mean, and I do too. You just got to, you just got to talk to us a little bit if you want to, or talk to someone, you know, that does construction about that. It's, it's not hard to do that, and we talked about that.
Talk to somebody besides you.
Well, that's fine. Talk to Purley then.
Well, you're talking about, when we talked about it, you talked about ripping the roof off.
Well, that, that's what I would have done, that's what I would have done personally, but we're past that now. Yeah, we're past that. I'm not going backwards, we're past that.
I know that.
Go ahead, Purley.
Yeah, I was just going to say it, it, it would hide that roof line is what it seems to be the, a lot of people's issue, I don't like the way they look. And, and mainly because of that roof line, you can put a false front on it and make it look however you want it to look without tearing the roof off.
Well, okay, I'll come talk to you, see what ideas you have.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Rachel.
I, and I, we've sent this out through Facebook and there's flyers around town, but in a way to spirit entrepreneurism in the community, I asked K-PED to give a presentation while the executive director, Tim Dillon, is in town on September 27th, just to share with the community what business resources are available in case anyone would like to connect the dots between entrepreneurism. And the city has these two waterfront retail spaces. So that was my way of trying to think of creative solutions to encourage economic development because I know that was the intention of the council, was to try and figure out how to encourage business when there might be people not able to afford retail space. And then if council does indeed want to wait till the next year to evaluate the future of the two harbor kiosks, we should have a discussion before the summer to determine if council wants to restructure the rental rates. Because right now, it's, I believe, $500 up to three tenants, and they have to secure their own insurance. And so if council wants to sub, set a lower rental rate to encourage people to come in, that's a decision as well that council can make before the next summer season.
Yeah.
To be continued.
Yes, obviously, to be continued, we have a number of items to talk about that, but agreed, if we're going to make a go of it for next summer, that needs to be an action item over the winter here to try to get, make some few changes or whatever it's going to take to make that successful next year, so. Okay, any other final comments for the work session before we go to the public? Okay, anyone from the public wish to either in person or online? And I see we do have Laurel Hiltz with her hand up.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, should we reiterate that this is for the Harbor Kiosk work session? The sales tax discussion is coming up at the next meeting in just a couple of minutes. So this is just Harbor kiosks or? And, yep, Ms. Laurel Hiltz.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, if you can hear me okay?
Yep, loud and clear.
All right, well, I appreciate that there's a conversation happening about it. Obviously, it's a, it's a difficult situation in that, that the monies have been invested and the property, the facilities are there, but not in use. I understand the idea of, of working on the design to make it more aesthetically pleasing, but I would concur with the city manager that the first thing that to consider would be to make it a viable place for the type of business that you're hoping would be in there. I think if we are thinking about how, how to advertise the fact that Saldovia has harbor kiosks, I wonder, are we looking to advertise to businesses outside of Saldovia? Because they're hard to miss. So I do think that most folks in town know that they're there, they know they're available for rent. It's been advertised and promoted what the costs are and what the insurance needs are. I think that as far as economic development, these might not be, these might not necessarily fit into that concept. I think economic development is taking a value-added building and the adjacent properties and making it into a viable tourism space. And those harbor kiosks would have been maybe a good thing in that, you know, fit into that. But these are a nice, there's a nice attempt to boost the economy or create a space that somebody could have their business. But you're looking at vendors, most likely, or somebody who's not attached to an existing business who would go in there and, and rent. And we have a history of people using tents and people having a co-op of artists like Synergy, Synergy back in the day. I think because you've run up against this big hiccup, I, I appreciate the idea of trying to fix it up and make it prettier because I look at it, look at them every single day. But I would just, I would just caution, and in reality, you've got six parking spots right there that if you're going to charge for parking, you'll be making more money off of the parking than you will on the rentals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laurel. Anyone else for a comment, public comment regarding the harbor kiosks?
Not seeing any more hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I don't see anyone with their hands in the audience. So with that, it sounds like we do have more work to do on this. Obviously, we all know that. This was just a general or work session to get that topic before us. And then we'll do some more work over the course of the winter here. Look at rate structures, look at, you know, the location, beautification, et cetera, access, all the things that, that we just talked about tonight. So then hopefully make it a Bible project. So, all right, I appreciate everyone's comments, and we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session. And then we're going to go right into a, do we need to do another link for this one? A third link? For the town hall?
I think, Mr. Mayor, it will be fine, we'll just have to make a note on YouTube on what this is, it's both meetings.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Yeah, at this time then, we'll just go ahead and that'll conclude the work session, and then we'll jump into, it's 6:30. Go and jump into a town hall for the, there was a public notice put out regarding the upcoming ballot proposition for a summer sales tax increase. That'll happen at the October election. Basically, thanks for everyone coming tonight and now looking forward to a good discussion on, on the sales tax and the greater. Basically, what happened is we, we've identified that, you know, we've known for a long time that our greater has, has had some issues. We had, along with that, our Public Works Department and most departments end up having a budget shortfall. We went through a series of meetings to talk about ways to solve this. We did have, we talked about doing the, an increase in the mill rate that was eventually shot down, given its, well, there was a number of differing opinions on that. But basically, that approach targets a very limited number of taxpayers within the community to try to come up with additional revenue versus a sales tax. And then that, that got brought up, and then that has been slowly gaining support, obviously, from, from council. And of course, that'll be split decision in the, in the public. The council went through, voted on it, and then basically, the way the process works, we've got a ballot proposition that then that will be decided by the voters of Saldovia. So what we want to do here tonight to keep things rolling is, the city's going to go ahead and give a little presentation. We've got some, a, someone from a salesperson from, I don't know what his exact title is, from NC Machinery to be able to answer some questions in regards to the greater. We've got Jordan Cameron here, our Public Works Director here, who will give us some information and then also be able to ask or answer any questions that folks from the public might have. So, and then we'll go, we'll get us through that, and then we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. And then, yeah, we can get into some, some discussion on, on that. So this time, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Rachel, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor Campbell mentioned, we have Steve Fisher with NC Machinery. He's been the salesperson that the city has been working with in order to figure out a new greater for Saldovia. NC Machinery won the contract with the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities in order to provide heavy equipment such as a greater. And because the state purchases so many a year, the cost of acquiring a new greater for Saldovia is significantly discounted as a result of this contract. And so I asked Steve Fisher to come and answer some questions on the new greater itself. And just wanting to clarify again for the public that the city does not have to pursue a new road greater at this time. If the ballot proposition passes, council can consider other options. But first and foremost, it's great to have the answers to the questions on the new greater. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to Steve Fisher with NC Machinery to touch on some few, a few things that have come up in the public arena about the new greater and answer any questions. And he's very generous in his time, he's stepping out of a kids' hockey ice field tournament to give a quick presentation. And so thank you, Mr. Fisher, for your time, and we're going to turn it over to you. And I believe he's that phone number up there.
Hey, Rachel, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you great.
Great, hey, thanks for having me, guys. Again, my name is Steve Fisher, got to bear with my voice here. Actually, I had to skip hockey tonight because I'm doing the second round of the COVID. So sitting at the house right now. But just wanted to kind of talk through what I have provided to Rachel and hopefully, some of you or most of you have seen what we've been talking about. I just want to go through the options, not only on a new greater, but also what's available to you if you choose to keep your existing greater and what you can do with that one. Certainly not trying to sway you guys either way, just educate you on what your options are. So as Rachel said, the, the proposal on the new greater is a new CAT 2022 model year, 140 greater, and that would be off of the AK DOT, the Alaska Department of Transportation airports greater contract. And that's a five-year contract that we hold with the, with the DOT. And what that contract does is it saves the city a substantial amount of money if you guys choose to go that route. Normal list price on a CAT 140 greater is somewhere around $400,000. And this particular quote that, that I've shared with the city is about $240,000. So the state gets a really large discount just because of the volume they buy. It's one of the biggest discounts CAT gives globally. So it's a, obviously, about the best way you can go purchase a new greater, I can say that pretty comfortably. So with that being said, just, you know, if, if you guys choose to get a new greater, you can expect delivery sometime, you know, say we get a purchase order by the end of the year, you can expect delivery of a new greater sometime in the first half of next year. And what that would include, so we would, we would get the greater to Saldovia, that includes freight home. And that is just, just the 140 setup as the DOT specs it out, which is basically for Alaska. So it comes with all the extra hydraulics, comes with all the cold weather prep, basically set up, ready to run, the, the proper snow tires for running up here. So really well set up greater for, for what you guys are doing with snow removal, and then also basic road maintenance in the summertime as well. But that's kind of the greater in a nutshell, just not trying to take up too much of your guys' meeting. The other thing that I wanted to touch on was it also on the quote provides for CAT's electronic technician program that we're including in the quote. The old greater that you guys have, the 120, that one doesn't require any kind of electronic capabilities. So we're providing the, the program and the license for you guys to troubleshoot this new greater. I know that was a concern some of you had. What would you do with a new greater in town? As far as taking care of any kind of diagnostic stuff that comes up, things like that. And the, the CAT ET tool, electronic technician tool that you'll put on a laptop will help your technician there in town troubleshoot, diagnose, and then also, you know, communicate back to our field service guys what might be needed there in town. So there is a way for you guys to still maintain this greater in town. The other thing we provided was a CAT finance governmental lease auction. Couple different ways you guys can buy this greater, you can certainly just write a check for it and, you know, provided a cash price to you, that price is the same whether you lease it or pay, you know, just one time. The, the CAT finance governmental lease provides you with a discounted rate, a 2.99% rate. And it's a lease in name, but it's structured more like a regular finance, like you go and, and buy a car, you know, finance it for 60 months. This particular lease gives you seven annual payments. They're all in advance, so your first payment is due the, the day you take the greater, essentially. So if you took it in 2022, your last payment would be in 2028. And then there's, there's a ceremonial $1 buyout. Basically, it's the balloon of the lease. All leases have balloons, this one happens to be $1. So pretty nice structure. After that final payment is made, the city owns the greater, just like you would on a regular finance installment contract. So that's, that's a bit of the governmental lease program. And then, you know, with that lease program, if you guys choose to lease it, we suggested that, hey, maybe you should take a look at extending the powertrain warranty or the powertrain hydraulic warranty to coincide with the lease period. So we provided a warrant, extended warranty coverage for up to seven years that would help control some of that cost where you're making lease payments. So that's a portion of that as well, so we can certainly finance that in. And then just talking about your current 120 and the options there, you guys can certainly keep that 120, we still support it, we still have parts, we still may, you know, we do rebuilds on, you know, 30, 40-year-old machines, every single year we do, you know, probably about a dozen of them in our shop every year. So we can just continue to, to keep it running as is. You guys have the option to actually bring it to NC Machinery and Anchorage, and we can do a full rebuild on it, or there's a couple different rebuild levels. And generally speaking, the, the rebuilds run about 70 to 90% of the cost of a new machine. So saves you a little bit of money on new, but you're getting your old machine back, basically. So you're not getting any improvements that the new machine has as far as safety, as far as comfort, productivity, things like that. But some people just really want their old machine back, but they want it, you know, completely gone through. So that's, that's an option for you guys too, to discuss. And certainly a great option, a lot of customers take us up on that too. So I, that's the, kind of the 30,000-foot view, and we can kind of dive in. If anybody's got any questions for me, we can certainly dive in from there.
Yep, hang on, one, hang on one second, Chris. Before that, before we jump to you, let me see if council's got it, then we'll go to the public. Yep, any, any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify? Yeah, if you could clarify with me, I just want to make sure I heard that you said to rebuild what we have right now would be 70, 90% of the cost of a new one?
Yeah, roughly, it, it really depends on the level of rebuild that the customer chooses. We can go through and we can just do the, you know, a lot of times, somebody will say, hey, look, my transmission and engine are the, the key concerns. So we'll go put a reman, remanufactured transmission and engine into a, a machine. And then there's a level that we can take it all the way down to the nuts and bolts and replace them all and make it look like it's new when it rolls out of the shop. You know, and that's, that's a level that not many customers take us up on, but we just did one for the media of Anchorage. They wanted their, their old landfill compactor back. And so we, we've got varying levels of rebuilds that we can do.
Okay, so it would be almost the cost of a new one, 30% less possibly for a new one. Or depending on what you were at, depending on what we decided. Sorry, go ahead.
Exactly, it, it, it could be, it could be, you know, save you 30%. You know, and it does depend on the condition of the machine too. You know, that, that is a big portion of it. So, you know, if we get it back in our shop and we realize, hey, like, there's more work than what the initial inspection showed, obviously, that, that's going to change what we do. You know, as we tear into it, sometimes we find things that we can't see on a visual inspection. But just as a rule, on the low end, 70%, high end, about 90%.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Vivian, anyone else from council?
Yeah, good Mr. Mayor.
Bobby, go ahead, and then, what I want to do is too, is give Jordan an opportunity to speak here because I think he can shed a little light here on a couple of things as well.
I just have a quick question, I can't remember if we already discussed this, but what about a, a new used one versus a brand-new one versus our old one?
Yeah, we, we definitely, yeah, we, we definitely can look at that route too, and Rachel and I, I believe, have shared those numbers back and forth. And, and actually leads into another question that somebody else had asked there too, so I'll knock both of them out. The used market currently is, is pretty inflated. Just, you know, 2021 as a whole has been kind of an interesting year for manufacturing. So the supply on the new side's been pretty limited, so it's been driving up used prices. But even before that, the state contract pricing is so aggressive from Caterpillar and from NC Machinery to the state that most of the time, you would have to go find like a 5,000 or 6,000-hour machine, you know, about halfway through its first transmission, you know, to, to find a machine that even starts to approach the price of a new greater off the Alaska Department of Transportation contract. That's how aggressive that pricing is on the DOT contract. So definitely, it's a possibility, we can, we can go out there and look for, you know, just to set the expectations, probably a 4,000 or 5,000-hour machine. And we do that quite often, the And we do that quite often. The media anchors is a, is a big proponent of buying used machines. They typically buy, you know, in that 4,000 to 6,000-hour range. And they'll buy smaller machines that aren't on DOT contracts. So that's how they, that's how they do that. And that leads into something else. Rachel had sent me, somebody had a question about why there are so many used graders, late-model used graders on the market, which is an excellent question. Somebody was doing their homework there. There are a big number of states and counties in the northern half of the US that, you know, do snow removal and road maintenance on these big, long county roads. And a lot of these counties and states have gone to a buyback model on their fleets where they just assume that they're always going to have a fleet cost and they would rather have brand-new or, you know, new to one-year or new to, or three-year graders. And so they turn their graders on a lease. And so, for instance, in our Montana territory, for instance, we probably roll about 150 to 250 graders a year, depending on the cycle year, into our used fleet and in turns, you know, deliver those new graders back to the counties as we take their old ones back in. So we end up with this huge rental fleet and a lot of dealers have that same program set up with these counties and states that, that have the access to those funds to be able to do that. So that's the big driver of the used market right there is, is these big fleet turns every year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Burley, did you have something? Okay, Jordan, why don't you go ahead and?
Yeah, Steve, I was, another thing we're wanting to talk about was, was warranty coverage, of course. And so if there was a used machine brought in from, let's say, NC's used fleet, or we were to have our machine rebuilt by NC, let's say, would there be any warranty on any of the work done? Or the used machine, would it have any type of warranty included with it coming from a, from your guys' used fleet?
Yeah, and let's cover the new machine too, just so everybody understands what, what a new machine looks like and then head down the line. So the new machine comes with a one-year standard warranty. And what that covers is the entire machine, any parts or labor required to fix any material defects or workmanship defects. That's all covered for the first year unlimited hours. What that doesn't cover, and I wanted to make this really clear, and this doesn't just go for you guys, this is anybody, anywhere, any manufacturer, not just Caterpillar, but this is industry standard, is travel time and mileage for a technician to come out to Saldovia is not included in that. So, you know, the, the flights down, standby time, if there's any waiting around time to get a shuttle or a ferry over, you know, things like that, lodging, meals. So none of that's covered, but any labor or parts to fix it for the first year, that's included with the new machine. And then, like I said, we added the, we could add up to seven additional years on a new machine at a couple different levels of coverage. So that's the new machine. Used machine is going to depend, what kind of warranty coverage we can get on a used machine is going to depend heavily on what kind of hours are on the used machine. So if we find a machine that's, say, five years old and it's got 5,000 hours, we'll probably only be able to put up to maybe about two years and maybe an additional 1,000 hours at a pretty low level of coverage, like a powertrain. So your engine and transmission. You know, if we found, some miracle happens, we find a one-year-old machine, you know, we could, we could go out, you know, probably five or six years and have the option to add on, almost like a factory warranty style, all the way up to that level of coverage if that was what was desired. So that really depends heavily on, on the age and hours of the machine that we find if we go used. And then if you guys choose to go rebuild, typically the rebuild, all the big components will come with a one-year workmanship warranty on them. But as far as like the, the whole machine, there's a 90-day, you know, on any work that we've done, which is pretty standard. And then, you know, like I said, the rebuild components, the engine, transmission, if we put a new or remanufactured pump, hydraulic pump in, that would have a one-year warranty on it. But it's pretty limited as far as what we can do for, for any kind of Caterpillar extended warranties on rebuilds.
Thank you, Steve. And there was one point you didn't touch on with the extended warranty. So we come with, with the new grader, it comes with a standard one-year. But if the city were to do the extended warranty, I think you gave me the price range of about $10,000 for the powertrain. And I can't remember the other part. Can you touch on the pricing for an extended warranty as well?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the powertrain warranty, and these are both seven years to coincide with the lease program and up to 3,000 hours. And we can adjust that if, if Jordan or anybody there thinks that the annual usage is going to be more or less than, you know, give you 3,000 total hours over seven years. But if we did just the powertrain, so engine, transmission, the two major components for seven years, 3,000 hours, it was $7,870 additional over the price quote that I gave you guys for the machine. And then the powertrain and hydraulics coverage, so all of the, the major components related to the hydraulic system, which is obviously a, a big part of the machine. That particular warranty for seven years, 3,000 hours runs $10,180.
Divided across the seven years, so it'd be a little over $1,000 a year.
Correct. Yep.
I thought that was annually.
Nope.
But that's over the seven years. Okay. Doesn't seem out of line.
No. And then, you know, speaking of the other thing we didn't touch on, but we do need to talk about it. If you guys choose to go down the governmental lease program, seven years is a long commitment for any city or governmental agency to make that, you know, funding is appropriated on an annual basis. And so CAT realizes this and they, they have a non-appropriations clause in the governmental lease contract. So if you guys choose to go with the new machine and choose to go the governmental lease route through CAT Financial, say, three years in, you know, for some reason, unexpected cost comes up and you guys have to allocate funds to something else and the funds just aren't there for the grader to continue on the lease, there is a non-appropriations clause that basically gives you an out of the lease. I've never seen anybody use it. CAT find, my CAT Fire rep tells me they've never seen anybody use it because generally speaking, when a, when a city gets a hold of a new piece, you know, they find a million and one uses for it and they're pretty loaded to turn it back in. But it is there if you guys need it. It's kind of a safety valve on the lease if something comes up and, and you can't continue with it.
So rather than a default, it's just a, it's you turn it back in and credit's good and everything's good still. Okay?
Correct.
Okay, any other? So kind of how we're running this meeting too, there's kind of two parts to this meeting. The first part being the, the grader portion, and that's why we've got Steve here. And then the second part is getting into a little bit more of overview back of the finances and the sales tax itself that could be used in part to fund, you know, a replacement or repair, repair grader. So we'll do, if there's any final comments from council on that, then we'll go to, for Steve, and then we'll go to public and let the public comment on the, the grader portion. Then we'll come back, have a little more presentation on the finances and the sales tax aspect of it, and then go back to the public again just to kind of keep things rolling on, on track. So we're not getting muddled in the process here. So any additional comments or questions from council for, for Steve on the, on the grader? John?
Yes, Steve. What would be the replacement cost for a, say, the transmission went out on our grader, the 120, the transmission or the engine? What's the replacement cost?
Off the top of my head, the last one I saw was the Anchorage School District. They had about a 25-year-old grader and, boy, don't hold me to this, but I feel like that quote came in somewhere around $60,000.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public and, yep, if we go ahead and hand you the microphone here so we can get you on the recording here.
Yes. I'm sorry. I apologize. If you don't use the microphone, then the people on the screen can't hear you or the recording. So we'll pass this along.
I, I do have a question for Steve as far as, you know, regards to a new grader. Is there any considerations for, for schooling or for maintenance? Because I know that newer things are definitely not easy to work on if you're used to working on older things. So is there any type of training school that comes along with the purchase of a new grader? Or anything to help ramp up maintenance so that there is preventative maintenance happening down the road with a new grader rather than letting it kind of fall to the wayside like maybe the old one, you know?
Yeah, great question. There's definitely a lot more on a new grader than the old 120 for sure. Different systems and, you know, just a lot more to, to look for on maintenance, I guess. Just do your daily inspections. Not that there's a lot more to do, just a lot more to watch for. So we've got an operator trainer that goes out. He works with all of our new customers. We'll certainly get him down there, or you guys can bring folks up here, whatever's more convenient and whatever might be allowed at the time. This has been a weird year for travel, a weird 18 months. And then as far as service training, things of that nature, we run pretty regularly, a couple of times a year anyway. Our electronic technician program, we bring in a lot of customers and do a group setting for training on electronic technician and how to properly use it to diagnose the machine that you have. So we can certainly get whoever your main maintenance person is there to one of those sessions. And usually it's an eight-hour or sometimes we even run a two-day if we get into theory of diagnosis and things like that. So we can certainly bring you guys into, to one of those as well. No, no cost to the city. We do those pretty regularly for our governmental customers.
And, and also I've got another question about the, the operating cost. Do you figure in an engine reserve or a hydraulic reserve, like a shuttle valve reserve or anything along those lines of any key components that may go bad? Or that are kind of time-limited items that you know are only going to last so long? So do you figure that into your operating costs for those things as far as a dollar aside for every hour of operation towards engine replacement or towards that type of thing? Or is that just kind of a blanketed figure?
I, I certainly would. I mean, we can certainly, you know, we can map out, you know, the costs aren't baked, you know, hard, hardcoded in because things change, you know, from now over the, say, seven-year period that you guys might be leasing it or, or say 10 years, whatever number you want to put on it. But we can certainly go in and try to figure out what that, what that looks like based on your annual usage. And then you guys can, you know, like you said, build in some hourly charge internally and, and set aside for, say, your, your first reman transmission. It's going to take you guys a long time to get to 10, 11,000 hours, you know, just, just, but it's still something you should absolutely plan for. You're exactly right.
Yeah, okay. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone else? John? Yep, we'll go ahead and bring over the mic for you. So. I'll start with a couple of questions for Jordan, I guess. My understanding, the current grader we have has about 15,000 hours, correct?
It's. The counter has stopped counting at 2,300 hours. It's probably gone around at least once.
So in the process for the council and, you know, everybody involved, have we done any oil samples on any of the major cases, engine, transmission, anything to find out where we're at?
No.
Making a decision to replace this?
No, we haven't done any sampling and it's been recommended. And at some point, if we choose to go further with this machine, we'll, we'll have to either sample or, or, it depends on how much, you know, we want it. The mechanic has recommended that the sampling of the hydraulic system and the transmission engine would, would definitely give us an idea of how much life is left in the machine.
Right.
And we, we just haven't, we are not sampling maintenance outfit.
Okay.
At this point.
Okay. So I jump in, Jordan?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
To, to that point, so if you guys haven't done oil samples to this point, definitely should start because you want a couple of samples in a row over, you know, a couple hundred hours to see a trend. Just getting one sample doesn't give you the trend. And if you guys, the, the one thing we can do, and Rachel and I talked about this last week, is if you guys choose to, to continue with the, the current 120 that you own, you know, we can definitely send a technician down there and do what we call it either TA1 or a TA2 inspection. There's, there's one that's more of a visual, which is the TA1. And the TA2 is a, is a really invasive inspection. And they'll check, they'll pull belly pans, they'll pull all the tent off of it, a lot of the tent off of it and check pressures, check tolerances. It's about an eight-to-12-hour inspection for a technician to do. And that would give you a really good baseline of where your machine's at. So that's, that's definitely a possibility that you guys could pursue.
Okay, so that's, that's exactly where I was going with this conversation, Steve. Just to give you a little background on myself, I've got 40 years-plus experience in the equipment field as an equipment manager and of a 14,000-unit fleet. We replaced about 120 graders a year. And of those graders, we always analyze them to see where we're at, which graders were candidates for rebuilds like Steve's talking about, or which ones simply needed replaced. So in my opinion, we really don't know where we're at until we have a 12-hour inspection done and find out truly what we have. Okay? And then go from there. And there's lots of ways to go. I'm certainly not advocating not buying a new grader if that's our only option. But I do have a couple of questions, Steve, for you regarding the new grader. Only because I'm from the environment that brought everybody in the world, these particulate traps that are on everything. I worked for the highway department in California for 20 years and we were the first people in the nation required to install particulate traps, retrofitted traps on our equipment and it absolutely doubled our budget. Okay, so the questions I have for you. The particulate traps and the exhaust system that's on the 2022 grader, what kind of services required or is it all done on the machine? I'm about eight years out of that business. I know on the early retrofits, we actually had to remove the cartridge and clean it in-house with a very expensive trap cleaning machine. And I'm assuming these are regenerated on the machine?
Yeah, very good question. So the DSO particulate filter is, the DPF is what fills up with soot and every shift. And the machine automatically, there's no operator input, the machine automatically takes care of that throughout the shift. And it also uses active dosing, so it doses fuel into the chamber as well to, to burn off. So that's on a shift basis. There's nothing for the people operating it to, to do other than to, before they turn the master switch off at night, make sure the little orange light goes out before they turn the master switch off. Now, over the course of, you know, four, five, six years, however it long it takes to get to about 4,000 to 6,000-hour range, there's going to be a point in time where that DPF doesn't regen anymore. And generally speaking, the life on them runs about 5,000 hours. And once it's full, it doesn't regen anymore. Like you said, about five, six years ago, everybody thought we'd be able to take these things in and blow them out and reuse them. And it really is just, it's a better solution now just to turn it in and for a core and get a reman and put a reman version in there. We go through.
What's the cost of those traps? Cartridges? What's the cost of those cartridges?
You know, the last one I saw, I think ran about $6,000, $7,000, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
And so if you guys are running, I think Jordan or somebody tossed out a number, you guys are running maybe on a, on a heavy snow year, about 500 hours. So, you know, it's going to take about, you know, say, eight to 10 years to, to get to 5,000 hours and need a DPF replacement. But like I said, it's certainly a cost. But like I said, it's certainly a cost along with all the basic maintenance, um, you know, operating costs that you guys should be budgeting for.
Right, okay, so the, the other question I had for you was related to the warranty and the extended warranty and the travel time associated with that. I realized that it's several hours between Anchorage and Saldobia, plus air or boat travel. Uh, and housing, all of that. But what is required? If we were to purchase the extended warranty, what's required of the city as an owner operator? To maintain that piece of equipment so that you will honor that warranty? For example, I can't tell you how many extended warranties I've been involved in. And we went to file a warranty claim and then found out we weren't doing our maintenance required and they don't honor the warranty. So.
It's, it's in black and white. Yeah, absolutely. It's when you get a new machine, it comes with the operation and maintenance manual. And it's in black and white and about, uh, three pages. And it tells you every hour interval that everything needs to be checked or changed as far as fluids or filters. And you guys are more than welcome to do all the oil changes and greasings and everything on your own. We certainly don't require you to use NC machinery to do that. Most customers don't. But what they want to see is they file, um, with your receipts. They want to see the receipts for the oil that you use to change. They want to see the filters, a receipt for filters that you use to change. Um, and and what's really nice is if you have SOS samples over the years. Uh, that you can also point back to like you were initially saying. Um, so it doesn't take much, just receipts for oil and filters and, and, uh, you know, if you got, if you keep a maintenance log on the machine, that satisfies it.
Right, I, right, and there was a reason, that was a loaded question, that was the reason I asked you, was I wanted to make sure that the city was aware of those warranty requirements. Any extended warranty you purchase, you're going to have to have documentation to back it up to be able to get that warranty honored. So if your maintenance program is not in order, you're in trouble.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone online with their hand up wishes to speak, anyone from the public?
I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Jordan, I have a couple of questions for you real quick. Um, on our current grader, can you just give us in a nutshell, just the, the issues? And we've read it in the paperwork, just so we've got it on record, just what the, uh, what the main issues are currently that you, that you, um, you see?
Yeah, uh, the, the grader is, uh, a fairly reliable machine. Uh, it's, it's very rugged. It's almost a hundred percent mechanical of some kind or is not a lot of, um, electronic feedback on it. It does let you know if it's not charging a battery. And it lets you know if there's low air pressure. But it, um, it's, uh, it has a pretty high demand job when it's being used in the winter for snow removal. And that it has a high cycle in that it's, uh, extreme reversing and extreme forwarding. Uh, against loads, varying loads of, you know, snow or, or ice or whatever, using it to, um, to to pull ice off hills. And the cycling, it it can go forward and reverse. Um, I'm sure in a neighborhood of five, six hundred times in a snow removal time. And, uh, and it's not just forward and reverse in first gear, you also have to range through a multitude of speeds. And it's a power shift transmission and it's very, very rugged. You can, you, you know, you, you can decelerate if you choose or you can shift with power applied. Um, it's, it's configured so that it, there is, you know, it can handle that. And, uh, and it has for many years. It's only had, um, two tandem failures that I know of and, um, they were from, uh, you know, a chain break. And then the chain went around and shattered parts inside the tandem. And, uh, it cost us, you know, almost four thousand dollars to fix it. And it was down during a, uh, heavy snow removal, uh, fall. And, uh, it was a relatively easy repair for me. I had to make tools. And, uh, and otherwise, uh, we got off kind of cheap because it didn't destroy the housing or any of the shabs. But, um, you know, those are the kind of things that we've had to come, you know, deal with on, with the machine. Uh, it ran for many years with the wrong engine oil in it. And it ran, it seemed to have weathered that, that abuse quite well. Um, it, uh, it's done, uh, many, um, um, cycles with poor greasing and, you know, uh, you know, no, you know, low cleaning, you know, there's a lot of things of the exhaust was broken and it was breathing lots of soot directly into the engine. Uh, a lot of those things and they're just, it's wear and tear. And it's, what happens is that stuff over with your, your attrition in your maintenance crew, you have turnover. And, uh, and multiple tasks, uh, those kind of things just kind of, it, it turns into abuse. And the machine takes it well. It starts up every time we need it to. Um, we buy batteries for about once every eight years. Uh, we grease it, change oil annually. It rarely gets more than five hundred hours of use in a year. Uh, but, uh, there's many things that have shown thirty-four years of use. Uh, the drawbar, the circle, the moldboard are all heavily worn. And not only do they require, uh, some, some adjustments and part replacement, but they'll need welding. And some of the parts will have, just have to be replaced, large parts. Um, and that's just, just what comes in contact with the ground. So let's say, um, we do choose to replace the engine and transmission or update it. You'll still have these, uh, ancillary systems that have many hours on them. And, uh, most of them are, uh, labor intensive to repair. Such as a hydraulic system is centrally located in the machine. It's shaft driven off the engine and, uh, it's not easy to access. You have to remove the interior of the cab. Large hoses, all that kind of business, grease, dirt. And, um, we haven't even priced, uh, how much it's going to cost to rebuild our, our hydraulic pump. That is currently leaking, you know, about a half a gallon of oil per shift. It's something we can probably have repaired, but if we do send a shaft, the injection or the, uh, hydraulic pump to the shop. They're going to probably take it apart and find out that the whole thing is very worn and needs replacement. And which at that point is probably going to be the neighborhood of six thousand dollars for a new pump, not including labor. And, um, and then we'll have to probably flush the hydraulic oil and do a very good job at that and it's labor intensive. And you have to be real thorough. Not maintenance kind of jobs. Um, and it goes on and on. The, uh, grader's floor is very rusty and eventually will have to be ground down, repainted. The seat's broken, it's going to have to be replaced. The controls are worn. Um, hydraulic valve banks for both sides are leaking and will have to be rebuilt. And if they can't be rebuilt, they'll have to replace. They don't normally take a, a school and polish it and put it back together. You know, it's not cost, you know, prohibitive, they'll just replace it. And, um, you know, I'm a fan of the old grader. I think it works great. I like it, but it's, uh, almost forty years old. And, uh, one of the best things about thinking about how, what you're going to do with it is what's the best use of taxpayer money? Should we take and dump ten thousand dollars into it every time it breaks? And then twenty years down the road, we have a fifty-five year old machine that's very rusty. And really worn out? Or do we think about, you know, what machine we're going to have ten years from the road, down the road or twenty years down the road? You know, I like this machine, but it's, it's worked very hard. And, and it's kind of now, uh, liability. Um, I, I'm not saying it's going to break down any minute. But, uh, when it, if, you know, if it does, it's usually when it's snowing and you really need it. And it's, we're not mechanics. I mean, we're, I mean, I'm, I'm fairly savvy that I can handle most of the breakdowns on that thing. But if I go away, um, who's going to be the next employee? Are you going to contract out the repairs? Can you have a local person do it? Are you going to have, uh, somebody from out of town? There's all those things that are factors in this town because we're somewhat isolated. And we're off the road system. So, you know, I, I, I'm not a fan of used equipment so much because we don't know what it, where, where it's been. It could be something that's done, it's, you know, the life of the machine in brine on the highway. The state, states brine highways now with calcium and that gets deep in the systems. It's horrible on things. Uh, those, those problems are a lot of times unseen. It's not, not saying they're, they're, uh, like a terminal problem, but they're hard to fix, expensive to fix. And then, um, I thought, uh, my thought was that if we did get a used machine that we'd probably just be better off putting that money into our machine that we know works. So, you know, I was excited with the fact that we could get a new machine for half off. Not, I'm not a fan of a new big machine. I just think that it's amazing that you could get something that's almost half off. You know, I mean, it would be better if we could find, you know, maybe something that was a little smaller for half off, but that's not an options. So we, we can adjust the way we do things and, you know, use a little bit bigger machine. And, um, I'd like to, I'd like to say that the electronic thing is, is a thing that scares people, but, um, we have a twenty-twelve loader that's, uh, ET EPA tier two or three compliant. It's fully electronic. It has diesel particulate filter. It's been almost in service for ten years without any troubles. Very reliable. When that machine showed up, everybody in town danced. Loved that machine. We paid for it out of pocket. Um, it's powerful, it's quiet, it's easy to use. Um, it's reliable and it's all electronic, fly by wire. There's no, there's no transmission shifter. It's all wires. Um, it's a great machine. It's almost ten years in service. I mean, it's hard to argue that. And, uh, the only warranty issue it's ever had was a factory recall that they fixed free of charge and they sent an NC mechanic down and fixed it. And, uh, this is great. But, um, you know, if you look at some of these used machines, looking on NC site, here's, um, a couple of these machines from Montana that Steve was talking about. And, uh, there's a, you know, a two thousand fifteen twelve M in here. It's got forty-seven hundred and eighty hours on it for two hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot of money, not including shipping. Doesn't configure it for our, for our users. Uh, there's a two thousand eight, one forty in here with ten thousand hours for a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Does not come configured the way we need it and it's in Montana. So, I mean, used, they're very expensive and, uh, ten thousand hours, a lot of hours. If we've had a machine for thirty-five years and we've only guessed that twelve thousand hours, I think, um, you know, I think we don't do, um, a lot of hours, but our hours are severe and they count. They can't break down when it's snowing. People go crazy when there's a berm in the middle of the road here for longer than an hour. They hate it. Um, and I, it's, and it hasn't changed. It's been like that as long as I've lived here. And, uh, because you want to be able to drive around in your car and not drive over a mountain of ice or snow. And so, you know, best use of taxpayers' money is the way I see it. Um, I'm not saying that best available technology ideally suits us. But, you know, that grader was brand new. Once upon a time, it replaced some other grader that somebody probably really liked. Um, that old grader had a D trade in it and they probably thought, oh, that cat engine's not going to run as long as that old, that D trade. And, uh, you know, here we still got that thing. Um, it, it's a good machine, but it's thirty-five years old and ten years from now. Which goes by real fast if you think about how long we've had that new loader, which we still call it the new loader. We've had it almost ten years and, uh, ten more years is going to go by just as fast and it's going to be a twenty-year-old machine. And, uh, most companies, most, um, states, municipalities don't keep stuff that long. Uh, we do, because we like to get our value out of our dollar. And, uh, I think that, um, there's lots, you know, the pros of there was the warranty, your service and support and reliability from the cat product. This, you just, you can't match it. And, uh, it's nice to be able to get parts for your thirty-four-year-old machine. But, um, if you keep your thirty-four-year-old machine twenty years from now, you can be able to get parts for it. Um, the cons of the new machine, it's going to be a steep learning curve on how to operate it. But, um, there's steep learning curves on, on cell phones. People think they can't learn how to use them and then they text their friends. And, um, you know, that there's a little more cost to ownership. Um, diesel particulate filters are expensive. We got ten years out of ours. I hope that it lasts another two thousand hours. Because we only have twenty-three hundred hours on our machine that we've had for ten years, nine years, let's say. So, there's, you know, if we get it, you know, if there is turnover in the maintenance crew, you're going to have to train them a little more intensively to operate that machine. But, you know, that's part about being an adult. You need to learn how to use your tools and take care of them. It's, uh, it's no different than a water treatment plant. You got to learn how to use it and take care of it. So, um, I don't know. I think we could probably talk about this longer, um, but, you know, that, that loader is a classic example for me. Because we had a old, older machine that we got new and then we ran it into the ground. I was in the seat when it exploded and it ate a valve. And we needed to launch our haul boats and we just drove it till it absolutely wouldn't move anymore. And, um, many people were aware that that machine had problems and they just chose to ignore them and we ran it till it blew up. Now we, it was an emergency. I was a temporary hire at the time. I was there just to, you know, fell in the seat while people were out of town. And, uh, there was some, some choices to make and I looked at used machines for them. But there are great deals at sixty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars, uh, no warranties. Uh, different service and support. Some of the best deals weren't Caterpillar. But, um, you know, they're nice equipment. And, uh, you know, I looked at the engine at the time for that loader. They said, you know, they come means as, well, why can't you fix that? You went to diesel mechanic school and I says, I can, can fix it. You know, I've done, looked at parts and at twenty-seven thousand dollars, I think, um, you'd be foolish to, to go and buy a reman, a manufactured long block. And then put all your old parts on, you know, bolted on there because you don't get everything. Yeah, and that machine, not only did it need an engine, it needed a wiring harness. The brakes didn't work in the front. And the floor in the cab was rotted through and it was a ninety-four. It wasn't a eighty-four. And, uh, there was a pretty quick decision made that, you know, we wouldn't benefit. You know, our dollar wouldn't go very far to fix that thing up. There was, you know, no intention on fixing it up. It was just to get running. And they decided just to replace it and they went and bought a brand new machine. And that thing rolled off the ferry and everybody was so proud. A nice machine. So, uh, you know, Jim took that old machine and his guy spent the better part of two months rebuilding it. And it sits back in the bushes now and they hardly use it, but they do use it. And, uh, I don't know. And I don't know if Jim will ever get his money's worth out of it. But, you know, I think we're definitely getting our money's worth out of the new machine we replaced with. You know, how we went about it, I don't recommend. But, you know, you paid for it right out of pocket. I heard. So anyways, I don't like. You know, guys, if you have any other questions, you know, I mean, maintenance is key for keeping your machines a long time. But, you know, time, time adds up and you can't stay on top of all the systems that mechanics can. You know, we were all, you know, just mechanics and we stood there and polished on them, kept the painted up. Went through the gearboxes, did all those kind of great checks. That'd be great. Sampling's key. You know, we should always sample. It's a good thing to get on, but. You know, there's a lot of checks. I mean, you, you want to go and ask the maintenance guy so many times to check the valves. I don't think you'll get a valve adjustment check, check from any of the guys. Cause I know I was last one that did it ten years ago. And. That's critical. That's why that loader died. No valves were checked. It's a simple check, but you gotta have, you know, people to do it. And if you don't have people to do it, you need to hire them. And that's just one of those things, you know, we could keep things forever if we took very good care of them. But I think things just kind of go and wear out too at the same time. Kind of good to look into replacing things with new and starting fresh. So. Any questions that, you know, for me, I can try to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jordan. Appreciate the, the insight on that. Yeah, that's what I was looking for and just wanted everyone on the line and. Um, in the building to just kind of understand what, from your perspective, what you were, what you were looking at. So. Um, any follow up questions from counsel from Jordan and then we'll go back one more to the public here. Yep, go ahead, Vivian.
Jordan, thank you for that concise delivery. I think, I wish more of the public were here so they understood where we're at and where we've been with our equipment. And understand that there's two people or one and a half, whatever we have right now, that maintain the whole community. And so I applaud you with your intellect in diesel mechanic tree and what you're able to do. And, and I, I think if more people were here, they would understand where we're at and what we're doing. Right? When that loader went out, people were happy as can be when we got it. But it also was a shocker that the city had not set up any programs to purchase anything. So it was cash out and that money, we're still paying for it. Because it took a big hit on the city. So right now we're looking at, I mean, it's a beautiful segue into where we're, we're going with the second segment is our. Mayor discussed, and that is how we're going to finance our maintenance department plus the grater, a grater that's well needed. But I think you, you've explained to us very well where we're at with the greater we have. Um, and I appreciate that, Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Anyone else from council? Yeah, go ahead, George.
Well, just to try to crawl up out of the weeds a little bit and, and sort of try to big picture this. We're looking at a capital asset that we're getting for just about half, half price. So at the end of, first off, there's a relief valve if we, if we do have a big problem and can't, can't support the grater anymore. We can give it back. And we still have the old, the old one, if they're careful with it and over time try to, to fix the big things. We'll, we'll get by. Also, at the end of seven years, we'll have what, thirty five hundred hours on the thing? Take a look at the, at the cost of a used one that with thirty five hundred hours on it. And we're sitting there holding this thing that we only have half, half of the sticker price in it. Um, it sounds like the, the grater itself is just about for free. What it's gonna cost us is the operation of it. And. Pretty hard to beat that deal. And we're gonna try to pay for it with a very, very small increase in, in, in a sales tax. Two percent. And only that in the summer so that we can get our, our guests to pay for as much of that as we can. And, you know, when I walk into the store down there and buy a jug of milk for nine dollars, now it'll cost me nine dollars and two cents. Think I can handle it.
Okay, thank you, George. Anyone else on council before we go back to public and then we're gonna move on to the second half of our meeting? Okay, any follow up questions for anyone in the public? Chris, did you have one?
I, I got one, one on valuation, I guess, on the old loader or grater. Uh, I understand it's a great deal to get, you know, a, a, a new grater at half cost. I mean, value is value. If you can buy it for half cost, it goes to say that we could sell it as a city for a profit the next day. Right? That would be value. Half price, it's worth something. That's worth something. I get that too. Uh, I would hate to see this city fall into the same thing that it did with that one that was new at, at a time. And not have the infrastructure or the maintenance to be able to keep up with a new one. Otherwise, it's kind of pointless. In my point of view, to buy anything nice or new, if your goal isn't to keep it that way. And that's why the question for maintenance, uh, for factory training, that's a huge thing. It's a huge thing with new systems. It's a huge thing for Jordan to be able to go to a, a cat school and have him, you know. Factory trained on something like that. Cause one, it's great for a resume too. Now he knows what to look for and these are the key things that need to be done at particular times to make sure that the thing goes on and on and on. And you're not relying just on, uh, how well the thing was built initially, which seems to be what had happened to this. It was a really well-built grater, you know. Yeah, I, I, I like shiny new things just as much as the next guy. I also know that there's value in the old stuff too. So don't lose sight. I guess I just wanted to make that point too.
Yep, thank you, Chris. I think that's a fair, fair point. Anyone else from the public? Any follow up? John, you had one closing remark there?
Oh, I had a question for Steve. Is he still on the line?
I think so. Yep, Steve's still on there. Sorry, Steve.
Included in that bid is a, a, a price to purchase a ten thousand dollar snowgate. Will that affect the warranty on that new machine in any way once, once it's installed?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right. So the other questions I have, and I, I wanted you to understand that I'm not against buying a new grater. I'm just against buying a new grater when we're broke. We don't have the money for it. And the only way we can do it is raise taxes and I'm not for that. I'm just not. So my question is to Rachel, the first one. Uh, what's wrong with the graders that Jim presented to you earlier this week that were much lower in cost that are available right here on the peninsula?
Uh, through the mayor. Mr. Kennedy, when Jim Hopkins met with myself and operator Cameron, the options that he shared with us were two hundred thousand. Ha- higher priced models. So I, I mean, I can defer to Jordan if you'd like to add more to that.
There was one in there that was fifty or sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, they, they, uh, he, he showed us, um, one particular machine was a old state machine. I'm not sure if it was a highway maintenance or airport, airport maintenance. It was a Volvo seven seventy. It was a, um, two thousand and seven model. And it was set up with a high, uh, uh, wing and all that business and.
It had a wing on it.
Yeah, it had a wing. It was, it was a, it was, you know, meant for wide slots. And it's equipped very similar to this state's machine here and it was. You know, it was thirty nine thousand dollars. Um, but it was what I consider very rusty. Rustier than our machine that we already have. Uh, it was a Volvo. Uh, their product, service and support is a fraction of what Caterpillar has. Um, it was only thirty, thirty nine hundred hours, but. You know, those machines. You know, the, the, the service for them is not as good and if we take on a thirty nine thousand dollar machine and it poops its hands. We'll have to work on it.
No, no, I get that. And I get the support may not be here for Volvo liner. I, I get all that.
Yeah.
The other question I had was there was also one listed in Seltat and the opening bid was twelve thousand in the county. Where it had roughly five thousand hours on it, which is about ten thousand and it's a cat.
Right. It was a cat fourteen H. Uh, it's larger than a one sixty.
Right.
Uh, very large machine. Uh, it was old. I think that, uh, you know, very rugged machine and that, you know, I mean, that would be another neat machine if you wanted to go kick tires and. And have a look at it, but. I, yeah, I don't think it would, that we wouldn't get our use out of it, but. If it's older machine, it's gonna have to be going through. And we don't know that and, and we're not into mechanics. We're not into fixing things and, and, and picking them up.
Okay, so the next question is for the mayor and the managers. Is what, what systems are we gonna put in place to support a new grater as far as maintenance and. Preparers to make sure that we don't end up in the same place and what's the plan for ten years from now when we need to replace it again? Or fifteen years from now?
Yeah, I can, I, you want me to crack?
I love the question.
John, cause I was li- listening to the conversation we've got here and some of the takeaways that I've noticed. I mean, it's, uh, number one, uh, it sounds like we need to have periodically, you know, uh, either a TA one or TA two type inspections. To get an idea of where our equipment's at. We have to have a maintenance program in, in writing. I mean, that includes oil sampling to get baseline samples and then know either annually or, you know, if it's every oil change or every other tool, uh, oil change. Um, I know we did that, you know, when we repowered our boats. We, we, that was, because we, I was in a lawsuit one time over. Engines and we didn't have oil sampling to back us up. So with the manufacturer and that was unfortunate. I know oil sampling is a, is a big deal, uh, for maintenance and it basically tells you a lot, uh, when you're doing it. So. Correct. And so that's my, that's my follow up to that is this is how we're in this mess. Limited resources, limited staff, limited money. So that's the inherent flaw of maintaining infrastructure in a small town. Not saying that we certainly can't accomplish those things. That's just, it obviously has not been a priority with, with previous administrations. And I think that's, you know. If we get any kind of new asset and, and taking our current assets, um, you know, into account, yeah, we, we need to start. We need to do something different. I mean, we gotta change things. So. I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
Leading into what I offered two years ago to the city, you're probably not familiar with that. But I offered to assist the city free of charge to set up a proper maintenance program for the fleet. And it can, it can be done long before you, Rachel. So, but it can be done very inexpensively. And I, I believe it can be done with the competent staff that you have. I really do. It's just a series of simple inspections and those, those more comprehensive inspections Steve were talking about. You could decide to do those only. You know, annually or biannually. See what I'm saying? But the more, uh, the minor inspections could be done and, and to be honest with you, most major problems begin as minor problems. So, um, they could be caught well in advance and planned for. You know, and scheduled to repair long in advance. And that's my biggest concern with the whole issue is, is. What's gonna prevent us from being in the same situation?
Yeah, agreed. And I think that's duly, duly noted. I don't, I don't think anyone could deny that. So. Chris, did you have another follow?
One for Jordan actually would be a, a question for me would. If we had the capability of taking that old grater and having it redone. Uh, for let's say seventy percent of the cost of a new one based off of whether it was the half price or the full price. We're not sure on the numbers. But wouldn't it make more sense? Because it sounds to me like the one time that the grater wasn't really available to degrade the roads was. Was actually an operational problem. It was a chain came off and messed something up or something that could happen to. A new two hundred thousand dollar grater and you'd still be in the same boat. Uh, as far as not being able to degrade the streets that day or whenever that repair was done. Has anybody even bothered to look at the possibility of rebuilding this one? Spending some money and having a second used one that's available for those emergency interim days. I know it's probably not that often, but maybe within the same budget, there might be a viable solution to that. Have a summertime grater or wintertime grater. I know for a fact that would be a total game changer on the wear and tear on a grater, going from summertime to wintertime. So if you had two, and I hate using the word used because it's just sounds like has been second, whatever, you know, but, uh, I already have it, right? It makes sense to me to have something along that lines rather than relying on one piece of machinery to do that job. If you have the capability of getting two pieces of machinery to do that job a hundred percent fail safe. That sounds like money well spent to me and, and, and I guess that's more of a statement than a, just a question. So.
Yeah, I think there's, there's pros and cons to that, you know, both that are, and then we've got two pieces of equipment to maintain. I mean, I, I get it. I'm myself, I kind of think along that same mindset. Well, if you've got two pieces and if one goes down, you've got a backup. Um, so Jordan, you had.
Yeah, uh, I mean, we, we haven't got to this point with our grater without good maintenance. That machine has, has had maintenance. Uh, it, because it's low hours, it doesn't need, um, a lot of. Of intensive maintenance. You know, once a year you can change the oil and you haven't exceeded a five hundred hour Louisville change. Um, and that's long, that's extended, long time. Um, rarely do you get over a two hundred and fifty hour. Um, it just doesn't, we don't put lots of hours on things, but we put lots of cycles on things. And cycles, cycles are, are, um. When it comes to that kind of thing, that's when you have to do a lot of visual inspections on gear cases and all that kind of business. You're looking for wear patterns on sprockets and, and, and all that kind of stuff. It's. You know, it's those, those things are shock loads are, 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 are hard, hard to, um, to, uh, to see. You know, oil sampling would show metal, steel and iron in there and you'd be, they would say there's something going, coming apart in there. Or bronze, you know, from a transmission and. Uh, you know, I think we, you know, we do have a maintenance program. It's just, it, it's, it's. When you just change all your oil and your filters once a year and you check your belt tensioning and that kind of business. I mean, even pulling the valve cover every year is, you know, that would be, that's a good maintenance program for our, for the municipality. You know, and that's just one, that would be with just one piece of equipment. We have a, a yard full of shit. Um, excuse me, but I mean, they, we do and, you know, and if you, you can go around and. Do all those things and it's good and, uh, the, and you get many years of use out of them. But that machine said other things besides drivetrain where, uh. It's hooked on rocks and ripped parts of the drawbar off. And, I mean, two inch diameter pins busted off. And maintenance crew repaired it, not a professional. They went in there and. Put a big giant bird, bird, bird poo weld on there and you got this. Maintenance repair that's held on for many years and good, good for them. But, um, there's other things, you know, you know, that the machine gets stuck, it won't lift itself up anymore. You know, we're gonna have to get into the hydraulics and, you know, replace, you know, the valves or the pump or whatever. You know, a guy will have to do a, a, a pressure test on it. It's not complicated, but somebody will have to do that and go, okay. You know, hydraulic system's weak. Where are we gonna go next? Replace the pump, clean the system, replace some valves, you know, all expensive. And, uh, and it puts it down over a lot of downtime and then. No warranties. If we do the work, you know, you'll have to send it so, you know, you, you know, there's, there's no warranties. You know, we could do the best job we can, we want and we could be right back at square one when it blows another hose out on the street and burn something up. And not to say the new one doesn't do that, but the more you work on things, the likelihood of, of mistakes are made. And, uh. Like I said though, that's a great machine and I'm sure if we. Put a bunch of money into it, it would last many years.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, Mr. Bear, you said the key word right there at the end. Suppose we decided to keep the old machine. We're gonna spend thirty, forty thousand dollars to fix it up, which would be a bargain. We don't have that either. We're still gonna be looking for some sort of a tax increase or another stream of revenue in order to be able to do that. Here's a plan for the new grater, all laid out, X dollars a month. That we've calculated that, that what we're trying to do will cover that, so. It just doesn't make any sense to me to buy somebody else's problems and try to hammer them together or, or you, you know, try to do something in a hurry on, on what we have. Yeah, we should keep what we have and we should work on it over time, but we need something reliable right now. Thank you.
Hey Steve, I have a question for you for still on the line there, the, uh, the TA two, the more invasive, uh, the, um, more inclusive inspection. What, just a ballpark-ish idea on the one forty for like our case? What it, what do you, is that ten thousand or is it twenty thousand dollars? Maybe I missed it somewhere, but you got a ballpark cost on something like that?
About seven thousand, including travel and time to get down there, plane tickets, the whole deal, probably about seven thousand.
Okay, okay.
And, and to be really clear, those inspections, they're really not needed when you have a piece of equipment that you've been following the operation and maintenance uh, schedule, um, for all your daily checks and, you know, all your different hour intervals that you do all your filters and maintenance and things like that. We really don't do those very often, I mean, really only when we go to sell old, you know, older piece, um, is when those get done. But if you guys are following the maintenance schedule to a T, you really shouldn't, uh, you shouldn't need to do a, a big major inspection like that.
Gotcha, yeah, and I, I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, but we've had a, you know, a fair number of turnover here in the last ten years and then, uh, I don't know, you know, if those are written maintenance records that are, you know, still available, Jordan. Or if some of them are lost or, you know, it's, it's just the normal small town city stuff, you know, until we get something that's automated and you can, you can keep it, um, you know, similar to our water and sewer mapping and stuff, it's the best deals, you know, in a file cabinet somewhere and then it disappears, so then we don't have anything, so. Um, all right, I don't wanna get lost on the, the second half of our meeting, uh, I think as, as we had said uh, or the city manager had stated, we're, you know, we're not bound to, to buying, uh, a new grader, I think we all agree there's um, some level of repairs or service that needs to happen, uh, to this grader if, if this grader is kept. Um, the, the bigger, the bigger picture here is, uh, and a key part of this is, you know, funding um, another part of our budget within the city, that's our public works department and all the, the, you know, ever-expanding operational needs of the community, um, you know, in order to keep, keep moving forward here, so. Um, we had over a series of meetings talked about the, um, opportunity for um, an additional tax and, you know, after the mill rate failed, then we went into, uh, discussions about the, uh, a sales tax to help us fund with, um, capital expense of, of a grader and the public works department, so that I'll go ahead and turn it over to um, the city manager, she's gonna give a brief presentation on, um, you know, a lot of items that we've tou- touched on in the past during the budget process, but also just an overview, so folks on the line and, um, people understand what, what we're up against here, um, from a funding perspective, so, thank you, Jordan, appreciate it. Yep, yep, you bet. Okay, thanks, Jordan, and then, uh, Steve, you are either welcome to stay, we're gonna get into kinda money talk now, so you're welcome to stick around or, uh, or we, we won't hold against you if you, you've got better things to do with your family here tonight.
Hey, I, I definitely wanna, uh, make sure you guys, if you do have questions going forward here. Um, Rachel, no, so I go, hold me, just, uh, send me anything and everything that comes up. And, uh, you know, whatever way you guys go, we're here to help, doesn't matter if you're sticking with the old one or, or looking at a new one or something used, whatever. You guys need, just let us know.
Okay, thank you, Steve, we appreciate your time tonight and, um, thanks again and we'll be, we'll be back in touch with you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Rachel, if you wanna take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, so I wanna, uh, direct the public and council's attention to page three in the packet. It's also posted online on our, um, FY twenty-two agenda page. And so this, I, um, I just wanted, uh, everyone to have a snapshot of the city of Soldovia for over ten years to see how we've been doing. And, uh, there are four, for the most part, four bars for each fiscal year. It shows what the city forecasted in terms of expenses and revenues. And then it shows actuals, what actually happened with our expenses and our revenues. So you can see, starting in two thousand and twelve, which is the year that we acquired the loader. Uh, we had forecasted expenses, um, right around half a million and we ended up spending a little under, um, seven hundred thousand dollars that year. So the orange bar that you see is our actual expenses, the blue bar is what we forecasted. And you can see from two thousand and twelve, um, up until two thousand and twenty, we've overspent our, um, forecasted budget at the city of Soldovia. Now, there's this impression that that could be the result of mismanagement of funds, um, but that can happen for a variety of reasons. Um, capital assets failing, roof replacements, uh, lawsuits, um, unanticipated um, staff turnover, needing to hire more people, con- contracting out labor, um, there's this, there are many reasons why the city could have exceedances of expenditures, but what's concerning to me is how the budgeted um, expenditures never changed, and so we were anticipating that for basically the past ten years we'd be looking at, um, five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars in expenses, when really it's been in the neighborhood of six hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars, if not more, um, of expenses. And so when we talk about how do we ensure that we can maintain our equipment, we can maintain our facilities, how do we ensure that? Well, we need revenue in order to do that, so now let's look at our revenue, um, forecasting. The gray line is what we predicted revenue we would make, um, yellow is actually what we brought in. And you can see, for the most part, we over, or we under-budgeted what revenue we were gonna bring in and we made more, which is great. And, uh, FY twenty is particularly high as, um, I believe as well as FY nineteen because we got COVID money um, to help us offset expenses there for revenue, so overall, the reason why we haven't been hit as hard is because just as poorly as we were at, um, not forecasting or looking ahead for expenditures, we also didn't um, come up with the most targeted, uh, forecast of revenue, so that worked in the city's favor. So this is just an, an overview where it takes, so I'm gonna move on to page four in your packet. If you look at the last five audited years at the city for the general fund, on average, it takes seven hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars to run our city. Of that amount, four hundred and ten thousand is personnel. That is not unrealistic to have people running your city is extremely expensive, you have wages, uh, payroll liabilities like insurance, um, other benefits, so just, just put that in, put that in mind, if you're looking at a five-year average for expenses um, over half is just for your people. Now, on, on, on top of that, um, you have to do things like building maintenance, um, securing equipment. So I'm just trying to put that into per- perspective for the public. Now, if you look at what revenue we make in through sales tax or, and property taxes, we make four hundred and fifty-seven thousand for FY twenty. Personnel's four-ten, so our, our taxes in Soldovia are just covering basically people. Where is the difference, where's the sustainable source of revenue to cover the maintenance of our facilities? This facility, for example, before I got to the city, um, previous administration tried to get a community block development grant because we have to open the windows in here, it gets too hot. Some, it, it's, the fire department has a joke where they should bring in margaritas and blow up palm trees because it gets so hot in there that they can't even meet, that's just a joke, they don't actually do that. Uh, but those types of things take funding, so where are we gonna get that when we have expenses that are increasing? Because things only get more expensive and yet we don't have a sustainable source of revenue to offset those costs. Um, so I just wanna make sure that that perspective is before the public because now we have, um, uh, sales tax increase. Council made the decision not to look at property tax after hearing from the public because they understand that that only hits residents. And it's not fun at all to talk about taxes, however, that's the main way the general fund is supported, is through property tax, real or personal or sales tax. There's really no other source of sustainable revenue. The city has tried, um, to get away from using the state's grant, community assistance funds to balance our budget. Last year, we got seventy-five thousand. Because we try to get away from that balancing our budget on that because the state constantly says, we're gonna take that away from you, Soldovia, we're gonna take that away from all the communities cuz the state itself is in a bad financial predicament. Basically, the governor said, smaller communities, communities throughout the state of Alaska, you have to figure out how to pull yourselves up from your own bootstraps cuz the state of Alaska can't figure out how to do that right now either. And they're working really hard to try and figure it out, but everyone is in a really tight spot. So how can the city do it? Um, council talked about it, there was initially a pro- proposal for a year-round sales tax increase. But then there was, uh, an amendment or changing of that to have it just be for the summer. So that not just city residents were, um, financing the cost of, uh, what it takes to run the city, but non-city residents as well as visitors. And so that's why you have this proposition before you and you can see, um, on page five of your packet, what are some of the examples of what, uh, for example, supporting your public works and maintenance department more could do. Uh, we could purchase road material, I've been told since I started here that the city hasn't raised its roads in forty years. There's potholes we cannot get rid of because we can't cut the ground, that, cuz we're hitting bedrock. And they'll perpetually be there, um, helping with dust control in the summers, purchasing more equipment, um, doing general maintenance and, including right-of-way, uh, clearing, snow removal, culvert replacement, um, improving our facilities. Um, our auditors have said that basically all of our capital assets have depreciated by half. So that's a wake-up call to me as the, your administrator, well, what, how long is this building gonna last? Here we are talking about a grader. So these are all really important, um, discussions to be had because the city, in terms of a savings account, we have, uh, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the whole city. So if there was a major failure at the water treatment plant, a major failure at the harbor, th- that would support all of that. Um, Jordan brought up the loader and how the city just bought that in one swoop, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in one hit. To, to, um, get that new loader here to Soldovia. And it's been great in terms of maintenance and sustainability, but that would be a huge hit if this grader failed and we were forced with coming up with a really quick temporary solution, that could still cost us anywhere from sixty to eighty thousand dollars if we were trying to get a, a sustainable purchase for a grader. Um, so the ballot proposition before you says two things, first, we're gonna pay off debt encourage to buy a grader or the grader, it doesn't say the new grader, so there can still be a change in what grader the city purchases. Once that debt is paid off, then all of that funding from the increase in sales tax goes to the public works and maintenance department. If you look at the two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan, which is the last page of your packet, on page six. This was a plan that was developed in the community. Um, I think over a year, people from, um, all of Soldovia came to help develop this comprehensive plan. First paragraph, residents value the varied services and community infrastructure that the city of Soldovia currently provides. They also understand the need for a sustainable funding approach so that the city can withstand economic shifts and ensure continuity. And then a core essential service and responsibility for the city is maintaining city assets and infrastructure to a high standard, but we cannot do that, we do not have the funding to do that, so what, what have we seen? We've seen building maintenance be deferred, equipment maintenance be deferred, um, purchases not happen that need to happen, so then that puts us operating in a reactionary from the trenches mode, when something like this could be so proactive. So, and, and increase in the summer sales tax is estimated to bring in fifty-three thousand dollars a year. Not borne solely by the residents, by all of people who come to Soldovia during that time period. That would help pay payments, so if the city elected to go with this grader. Payments on average, I think, were between thirty and forty thousand dollars annually, so we would meet the required payment and then have a small surplus. And then after the grader is paid off, it all goes to the public works and maintenance department. Uh, where we could start fixing, um, the city assets and what resources we need. So again, don't have to pursue the new grader, even with the financing option, we could consider other items, but, uh, uh, an affirmative vote on the ballot proposition will be, uh, main contribution to how the city can get out of, um, the decline that it's currently in, which you're seeing when you look at, um, the budget. And if we are not able to get, um, sustainable funding sources, then the city has to look at cuts. And we already operate very, on a very limited or restricted basis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Rachel, I appreciate that, yeah, and I'll just, I'll just chime in here, so, I mean, nobody, nobody likes taxes. I don't like taxes, nobody up here likes taxes, we don't like it, we just, that's not what we're, what we're about. What we are about is maintaining our community, maintaining our infrastructure, maintaining the place, uh, we all live in. We enjoy, we enjoy, uh, uh, some level of service by living here, right? I mean, if you wanna live off the road system in Timbuktu somewhere and you don't want any services, that's great, that's your deal, that's great. Me personally, absolutely not, I want water, I want sewer, I want my roads plowed, so I live in town. I'm willing to pay my share, my business is willing to pay my share, I will pay my share. I don't have, I don't have an issue with that, this is the lifestyle I choose, I know it's more expensive. I pay a ton of money to commute back and forth, unfortunately, I can't make the money in this town that I do, but I work out of town because I wanna live here and it costs a lot of money to live here, I get it, um. We, it's very simple formula for me, we don't have the population in this small town off the road system to support everything that we want. I mean, I think that's very, it's very evident, we have a school that's, we have a beautiful school, that's, that's pretty much, for the most part, empty. We have, you know, we, this year, I think we might be up to forty, forty, forty-five kids this year. With that being said, it was twenty-six here a few years ago or something, it was just about to close. Our town is, it's, I've been here for almost nine years now and it's slowly, slowly starting to grow with the population. We don't have things, when I came here nine years ago, everything was for sale, there was, Main Street was nothing but for sale signs. There was one or two businesses other than the fuel and lube and the crab pot, it was a, it was a slow deal. Uh, the town has worked hard to, to turn that corner, we advertise, uh, we, we take care of our visitors, we love our visitors. Not everybody loves our visitors, but I love our visitors, uh, if you're in business, you like your, your visitors, um. And all, and all I'm saying, and, and I'm gonna advocate for this, is that's why I voted against the mill rate. Because a very small group of individuals in town, is, it was being asked to put the bill to, to pay for all this. And I'm like, no, we, we can't do that, we can't continue to go pay with just a, you know, a handful of people to pay for everything. That's like Rachel said, in municipal government, you can go on, you can Google it, do whatever you want. It, it's, it's, there's a certain element of taxes that, that has to, has to be brought in to support your community. Again, I realize that, you know, we have, already have a high mill rate, we already have a high sales tax. Um, I can't, I can't do anything about it, I gotta look at where, we have to look at where, where we're at, the situation we're in. What it's gonna take to, to move forward, um. We have started to tighten, we, we have drastically started to tighten our belt, we have, we have cuts with, with hours to the city. We have done a, we have taken a deep dive into the budget. Um, if you look at the way, at that bar graph and look at, you know, like Rachel said, and you look at those numbers for ten years, we, we saw that we had a problem, yet the councils weren't willing during the budget time to, to make those adjustments, we kept, we kept overspending. And we would budget art- artificially, knowing from, from our trends that we're gonna overspend, and I guess it was just an accepted practice, that's just what we did. Well, we can't, we can't do that anymore, we're, the savings account is, is dry, we don't wanna drain our permanent fund. We are gonna be looking at, at lands, some of our assets, what we can do to, to, to help our situation, as we've all stated. It's not gonna be one, there's no, no golden goose here, it's not gonna be one thing that gets us out of this, it's gonna be a combination of uh, a number of, of small things, and I consider this just one more small item. Um, so that's, that's what we've come up to with as a council to present to the voters, it's obviously gonna be up to the voters. Uh, you'll have to make up your own mind, um, but just. You'll have to make up your own mind, but just knowing that if we, you know, if, if this, if this fails, then we're going to be, you know, back back to starting, the starting block again, trying to figure out what else it's going to take or what other cuts we can, you know, we're going to have to make or what other options we have to come up with additional revenues. So that's my two cents. Additional comments from council and we'll open it up to the public.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yep, go ahead, Vivian, and I'll get to you, Bobby.
Excellent points our mayor made, probably all the points that H one of us sitting on this tables would agree with. I think the most important thing I would say is that you actually understand that we don't, we're treading on this not because we want to, it's because we have to. And the mill rate increase, it just hits the residents of Seldovia. How, that's just not fair. We can't take it. And that's what we heard from the public. So this increasing during the summertime, letting the people who come here and enjoy Seldovia sharing the burden is a wonderful alternative. When I go vacationing, I don't really pay attention to how much I pay for taxes and I, or I assume that they must need it. And obviously we need it. And we're in a situation now that I hope after tonight's meeting, some of you may have changed your mind and that you'll spread the word. I wish more people were here to really understand what's going on. And I really hope maybe that maybe they're not here because they figure, oh, gosh, it's probably the best thing that Seldovia can do to help us move forward. But if we don't move forward, if this doesn't pass, then we're looking at doing, I don't know what. When I came here forty-seven years ago, there was a running cannery, there was loggers, things were happening here. The school was full. Things kind of changed. It went downhill, but I'm happy to see right now that things are coming up on the upswing. People are coming here and making new businesses and I applaud you all for doing that. But in order for the city of Seldovia to make it, to have water and sewer, have the buildings that we have, have the sewer. It takes money. And right now, thinking about putting money into a fund that would help support us. I mean, it's beautiful to think two percent increase would bring in X amount of dollars to help us move forward into a maintenance fund. And you have to remember, I felt so sorry for Jordan sitting here because he knows he's worked for the city different times off and on. My ex-husband was a public works director. And they have a lot to do. And I, and I'm sure if we get a new piece of equipment, there's PMs, preventative maintenance, and they'll do it. And our city manager makes sure, I mean, for years now, that's been part of the deal. And we just need to put into effect. But what we need is the support of the community to help us get through this and what we need to do. It's not an easy decision, but gosh, it's a pretty nice fix that we can share the burden beyond those residents of Seldovia. So I hope tonight's meeting kind of changed your mind a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Bobby?
Okay, I totally agree with everything that Vivian just said. Plus, I want to add my own little comment. First of, I'm sorry to say, but I think this turnout is absolutely pathetic. And thank you for, you guys that did show up. And I say that because I've heard a lot from people about this, that read it on the chatterbox. Where are, where is everybody? I guess nobody, either, either everybody has made up their mind, one way or the other. Or nobody cares. That being said, I think this is a pretty good compromise. I mean, I don't like paying extra money either, but I think I'm kind of, my brain is still with me a little bit to know that I've got to pay for the services I get. And how are we going to pay for that as a municipality? The municipalities always rely on property taxes and sales tax. And in the big scheme of things, Heidi, I hope you gave me the right figures. It only is twenty cents on ten dollars for an annual increase of fifty-three thousand dollars. That's really not that much if you think about it.
Twenty cents more from what the original is.
Right, twenty cents. I, that's what I should have said. Twenty cents extra on ten dollars.
So it's ninety-five cents on ten dollars.
Plus the fact that there has not been an increase in twenty-one years. How much extra do you guys pay for everything that you get, you buy? How much extra have you paid in the last twenty-one years? Do you think the city doesn't need to do anything? So anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you, Bobby. Anyone else from council? John?
Yeah, I, I agree with what everybody said, including Jeremiah. And one thing on the property tax or the mill rate that wasn't said was only about fifty percent of the people will be paying that tax. The other fifty percent are exempt. So really, it's, it's, I wouldn't vote for a mill rate increase, but the, the tax, the summer tax on food and, and goods. The majority of the money coming in from that will be from people that don't even live here year round in Seldovia. The B F, you'll be paying about a quarter of that fifty, fifty some thousand that we project to get from it. But we'll see when it comes to the vote, how it turns out. I hope, I hope the people voted in. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up to your point, John, and thank you for reminding me of that. That is something that, I mean, if you're not involved in the, in the budgeting process in Seldovia, you gotta understand, we've got, I think it's give or take a million or two, seventy-four million dollars on the tax rolls. And as, and of that, it was your thirty-six to thirty-eight million is, is tax exempt. So we're, we're operating, we're, we're getting half, half of our taxes. Those are either from native lands, senior exemption, the personal exemption. There's a number of exemptions in place. And yeah, we've got a lot of beautiful land around here, but we don't get the tax value on it. That brings up my, my next point when we, we talk about all the vacant land. Vacant land does us nothing. It's useless. It's, it's great to look at if you're into looking at vacant land, but as a city and, and someone that's responsible for developing our city. Vacant land inside of a city does nothing. It does not, it's worth zero. It's worth very little in taxes versus a developed piece of property. And that's what I want to see. I want to see more development. I want to see more, more single family houses. I want to see more businesses of different types of businesses in our community. That's what we need to grow our population and our tax base. It's a, it's a, it's a twofold system. It's win-win if we get more of, of both of those. So any other questions, comments from council before we go to the public? Okay, public, your turn. Who wants to go first?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. We probably shouldn't have been doing this all along, but maybe for the record, we could just state your name and, you know, your community owner. I know, but we have people on the, on the screen that don't.
Christine Brandon. So, and first of all, I just want to say thank you to Rachel because that was a very nice and brief and to the point presentation. That was very factual. So it was really, I like to see the numbers. I like to see the graphs and I really appreciated that. And I really appreciated Vivian's, you know, point of view too. You know, it's, it's nice because I, I want to be able to understand. I don't understand this process very well and want to be an active member of the city. I think what we both find very, very frustrating for us is, you know, we've been here for only two years. So we're the newbies, you know, last year we bought three and a half miles out the road and we continue to, to work on that. And just a few months ago, we bought out here and started our business. But because we are residents three and a half miles out, we have no say. The only way that we can voice our opinion is here. We're not really allowed to vote. The only reason why we were able to vote and be a part of the community was when we were living on our boat or above the bar. And, and to me, that's, that's not appropriate. I, we should be able to voice our opinion. We should be able to vote. We have a vested interest in this community because we are now on our second piece of property and we run and operate a business in town. That is wrong. I, I do believe that that is wrong. I mean, it, we are more than willing to pay our share. But if we do so, we should be able to, to vote. I guess that's really just, you know, what it, what it's going to come down to. It does impact us. It does impact our business. And Vivian had some really good points and I appreciate that. But sometimes I feel like raising taxes is too much of an easy button. I want an easy button too. You know, taxes don't go down. They, they always go up. And, you know, I like the arguments, you know, on either side, you know, so that's a tough one, but overall I, I feel no on, on proposition, you know, one. You know, I, I feel like we need to do a little bit more research on the greater. Yes, you know, we, we need to do something about a greater. Maybe leverage some experts, you know, John Kennedy is a great expert. Jim Hopkins is a great expert. There are great mechanics over there that have a lot of expertise, you know, in this particular area. And I would just caution everybody on this council and everybody in town. You know, on the shiny new objects, because I know that, we all know how dealers are. We all know how car salesmen are. Right? They, they have the great packages, you know, they, they're really quick to sell you on the best and the best warranty programs and everything that the new car has to offer. And I know personally, you know, Chris and I needed a new vehicle. We couldn't afford a new vehicle. You know, so we made some adjustments and we used, we, we did a trade and put it down and paid off our used vehicle in, in a few months. So, you know, I think that there, there are some, you know, some options there. And I just think that we need to take a look at the big picture is, you know, do we need it? Yes. But do we need, how much should we allow to spend for, was it three and a half miles of, of road? You know, and, and that's, that's my concern there too. I did a lot of research. You know, this morning and of course, you know, I just one shot at it. So, you know, and, and I'm not doubting how much time you guys have taken a look at options. But Vivian inspired me, you know, to take a look at solutions and I really like to be solution oriented. And so when I looked online, according to the municipal world and the National League of Cities and the Institute for Local Government, a lot of these small rural and remote communities have you know, different best practices that they've gone after, one of them being diversifying the economy and commerce. You know, commerce, the activity of buying and selling, you know, being the definition of commerce. So right now, our community focuses just on tourism. And according to these references, that makes our, our city weak because we just focus on tourism. We don't have a lot of year-round commerce. So we need to focus on that. We need to focus on targeting brands and industries that would be right. You know, to bring to Seldovia, maybe new business incentives and, and discounts. And, and I think I heard you speak about that possibly in the very beginning when we arrived about maybe discounting the, the rate of the sheds that are over there. Because a discounted rate or, or a very deeply discounted rate is better than nothing because of the tax revenue that that's going to bring into, to the city. Some of the other points that those references and those articles referred to for small, remote cities is broadening the city. And I know there's been a lot of talk about that. Also increasing the bandwidth and networking capacity. For example, you know, a, a cell tower, and I know they're working on that. But the two biggest points that these articles and these references brought out were not just focusing on tourism and making sure that we increase the band work, bandwidth and the networking capacity because that makes our city weak as well. Because if we have a greater bandwidth and we focus on the cell tower, that allows businesses and individuals to expand and go more global and regionally. It's very difficult for us to be able to communicate and do business in town or outside of town because of that, the lack of the equipment. There was also federal funding for better infrastructures. I know Chris and I have had this conversation many of times, you know, why don't we have, you know, our own landing craft so that we can be a little bit more independent in case the Alaska Marine Highway System is down? That would be maybe another source of, of revenue. We have, you know, fabulous grant writers in town. Something new for me, which was kind of enlightening, was leveraging segment businesses. And I didn't know what that was. And so what that is, is, you know, finding that niche for your community and that segment niche for this community could be fishing, boat manufacturing, net making, some type of arts industry, economic gardening. Maybe working, you know, with mushrooms and hydroponics, you know, we have such lush gardens and, and great potential for commercial gardeners out here. Some of the other things that really remote rural cities did to help drive revenue to their communities were tech schools, skiing, winter festivals. For example, you know, the road out to Red Mountain in a partnership with maybe S and A. Coin operated public showers and laundry facilities. Maybe through the harbor or the RV park or right over here next to Halo Cab. But if they're coin operated, you know, yes, of course there's maintenance, but those things again bring in revenue. Marketing and leveraging the RV parks so that we can bring in more revenue that way. Maintaining equipment for rental use. I know two years ago when we first moved here, we tried to rent the pressure washer from the city. We really need the trailer to get, you know, the boat out onto the water and all of that equipment was, was broken. So, you know, if we're marketing that, you know, how much more income is that going to bring in? And then two other ideas, we're improving the boatyard for boatwork year round, maybe a heated hanger. Because on the Homer side, you see so many boats come out of the water. And these guys are working in a nice heated hanger that they're renting, you know, from private industries. You know, in this case, it could be the city of Seldovia. They're painting their boats or maybe you need to rent it to get some other equipment work done during the winter. That's a possibility. And then what, of course Jeremiah mentioned too, is development. I, you know, I think that is huge. If the city is considering selling property, you know, couldn't we come up with some type of stipulation that we sell to local contractors or developers so that we can work on the development and provide more housing within the city limits that would help encourage commerce year round as well? So those are just some things that, that I thought of and I was trying to really focus on being solution oriented, which sometimes can be hard to do when, you know, taxes, you know, get, you know, that, those conversations get going. But that's, that's all I had.
Thank you, Christine. I appreciate that. Couple of things I just wanted to comment while it's fresh in my mind on your comments. I appreciate the, the comments in terms of a solution oriented, half glass full versus half glass empty, right? Myself, I'm the same way. And I think most folks on the council are that, are like that. We need to focus on what, what we can reasonably do. We have to come up with solutions. Your comment on the, on the, the, the land sale and a development clause. That's exactly something that crossed my mind here a few days ago. I was thinking of that same thing and I was like, you know what? If we simply sell our land and we get a, all we get is cash out of it. It's a short, it's a short-term fix, right? If you, if it's on a private sale, if it'd be, I guess, no different than having a covenant on, on something. You have a, you have some sort of development clause and there's a covenant that within, for example, three to five years that that piece of property has to be developed. There has to be development of some sort. And you can stipulate that, don't make it too cumbersome, but you mean that the whole intent of the sale would be to further develop the, the city. And then long term. So it's a, it's a double, double edged sword. Yeah, it's, it's, it's good, good for all. So those are just a couple of comments I want to make on, on yours as, as a follow-up and then not to belabor this too long, but appreciate those comments. Christian, you have something you want to add or?
Is absolutely a good direction. I mean, we, you gotta keep the rose. How do you have any sort of economic development when you can't get to work in the wintertime because there's too much snow or there's a berm? I understand that a hundred percent. I think that a, a tax, a sales tax raise based off of tourism right now might be a little bit of a gamble. I'm not going to say it's impossible that tourists won't show up, but I won't say that it is entirely possible that we don't know what the next couple of years may bring. And maybe that might throw off your budget idea for how much you can afford for a new loader, let's say, you know, so, or greater. I think that definitely having a multi-pronged approach at sourcing the revenue to get a new grader would probably be the most impetuous way to go about it completely for the city, regardless if it's through raping sales tax or selling off property, but as long as it's a multi-tiered approach, I think it's just going to be better for all of us.
Yeah, and I, I think we're all in agreement on the multi-pronged approach and that's one thing that we, you know, we, we're trying to focus on. Yeah, like, like we said, the, the sales tax merely, really a small piece to this, to this whole. really a small piece to this, to this whole, whole thing. What we're trying to avoid is what we have to every year during the budgeting process of increasing our user fees. I mean, we have, we've, we've had to get some of these things back on track. Uh, our water and sewer rates, we've, we've had a slow, slow increase. Our mortgage rates, we've had a slow increase. We've got a harbor that's been operating a deficit for the last seven or eight years. All of our other accounts are starting to come in line. We're a small city, so we don't see huge, huge swings, right? We've got years and years and years of actuals, so we should know what we're doing by now on on when it comes to actual budgeting, you know, barring a a major catastrophic disaster. But yeah, the next one after this, that harbor is going to have some serious, some serious issues coming up, and that's not, there's going to be a lot of unhappy people, what it's going to take to solve that little problem too. For example, we had our tugboat, we had our tugboat convention here. That was phenomenal for the city. The spin off and the revenue off that was absolutely incredible. I went down there that night, just to give you an example, and the first thing I got an earful was, when do you guys, we almost fell through the dock here. I mean, we've got four hundred thousand dollar boats tied up docks that were half sticking out of the water, boards falling off, and I'm like, I didn't even want to tell him I was the mayor because I was too damn embarrassed. I mean, yeah, that's the, that's the reality of it, right? If we're going to have that type, uh, and they want to come back next year, there's no way I can look them in the eyeball and say, yeah, no, that looked just like that last year when you were here. And sorry for the big scratch down, down the side of your boat. It just does, that stuff doesn't fly with me. So if we have to, yeah, just like this discussion. Hard decisions are going to have to be made. The stuff, none of this infrastructure is cheap to maintain, none of it, so. John, did you have any, did you want to have a comment before we go to people in the panel?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for at least hearing me out, you know, and two years ago, I provided your maintenance employees with a series of books that they can maintain their equipment with, and it just, to me, it kind of felt like it just laid there. I'd like to offer that, extend that offer again, to maybe sit down with you and the council and show you how those books work. Wouldn't cost you anything other than time. It's a very comprehensive program. Inspection program. It it wouldn't cost you a whole lot from your employees, I don't believe, to do it. It is accountable in the fact that they have to supply a copy of that form up forward to the office, the office to see and to track and record. So it's a pretty good maintenance program. You don't have to have the fancy sophisticated software system that we had to do it. I mean, of course, it'd be nice, because then those records are, you know, exportable and you know, you can get trends and fancy graphs and all that with it. You know, that'd be nice, but I don't think we're there. And that's really what I was looking for, is some assurance, what's the plan? So for example, I was really grateful to hear your comments about development and other sources of funding. You know, for example, if we sold some property with some stipulations that it was for a certain type of development with maybe some tax incentives initially to get them going, but some affordable housing in town. What are we doing about the cost of fuel in this town? Every bit of fuel I buy, I buy across the bay. The city loses all the taxes for that. I'm just saying. You know what? Yeah, there's, when I, when I buy twenty four gallons of propane in town and it costs me a hundred and eighty five dollars, and I can buy it in Saldana for fifty. Where is that? Where's the? You see what I'm saying?
Yep, no, ab- absolutely, absolutely. I know, I get it. I get it. One, that's one, one problem of of many that we that we have.
And so, so that's the assurance of, you know, as a taxpayer here, I know what my sales tax was for last quarter. And I know what it was, I know what it is annually. It's a lot. And it's about to get to be a lot more. Okay, and so for example, I just wanted you to be aware, the first year I was a resident mechanic at the Kingville Station on Donner Pass, as a resident mechanic with a hundred and forty pieces of heavy equipment assigned to me, we had a fancy new grader. Just like the one you're looking at buying. Right? And I don't think it was in service two and a half months. Come back in on the low bed. And it had a broken drive axle from the power shift transmission. And this axle went between the differential and a chain case drive, it's about that long. About three and a half inches in diameter, splayed on each end. And it was literally sheared in half from power shifting in and out of gear. Fancy new piece of equipment cowboy. Guess what? Caterpillar wouldn't warranty it. And there wasn't an axle available. That unit was down for six months. Because they didn't have the parts for the new equipment. I'm just, just saying, it can happen, whether it's a new piece or an old piece, it all comes down to maintenance.
Yeah, no, and I I think that was my takeaway too, is I mean, I think we realize that, you know, we even given our limited recent
I'm definitely I'm definitely not criticizing the, you know, wanting to purchase a new one. I get the government contracts. We purchased many of them, we leased many pieces of equipment, all of the global loaders we had down are released. You know, I've seen all of these sales pitches before, all of them. But in our current financial situation, I don't know if we're there yet. I'm not saying, so my my question is, is why can't we get by with a sixty thousand dollar piece for a few years of plan? Once we've built our cast tax base and get a new one. That's all.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think all, I mean, I think, I think all options are still open here, so uh, we don't have to, you know, com- commit to that. We just know that we need, we need additional revenue.
And I, and in Jordan's defense, there are some real things that concern me about what he said. If the cab's rusted out, I don't care what kind of chassis you got under it, if you can't keep your feet in it. It may not be worth fixing. And that's why I think you need to have another set of professional eyes on it.
Yeah, I agree. I don't mean, I don't, I think we further the the conversation with, I mean, if you've got the expertise and are willing to, you know, volunteer that, I don't know why we wouldn't take you up on that, so.
So I, I know, I think the first approach might be to sit down with a couple of you and just show you the books and see if it's even something that's that's acceptable, you know? And maybe I could work in an advisory capacity just to help you get it. You know, get it in place, you know? But but there again, just like Steve said, you know, five thousand hours, you probably can have to replace that trap cartridge. You're right back to fixing fixing it anyway. We were authorized to do our own warranty in house, just purely because of the size of our fleet. And we just build the warranty, the vendor back.
Gotcha.
So that's another option. I don't know if it's available to a fleet your size or not. How do you become your own authorized warranty? Rather than paying them to come down here to fix it.
Yeah, probably pretty tough, given the the size we are, but I will tell you, that man is very talented. Pretty smart dude. So it's not that it's not possible. Hey, appreciate your comments, John. Thank you. Anyone, we have a few folks online there. If anyone's still listening, uh, anyone else in the audience? If anyone wants to add any additional comments or has questions before we wrap it up here tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a Ms. Laurel Hiltz.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, if you can hear me okay?
Yep, loud and clear, Laurel.
All right, thank you so much. Well, it's certainly been an interesting evening in terms of listening to the the information from Steve and the information from Jordan in relation to the the grader. And it's been maybe less interesting in relation to the the sales tax, other than I appreciate, you know, Rachel providing the the general synopsis, which, you know, we definitely have been privy to this information for a while, and and I I wrote Rachel to thank her recently for just the ongoing education in fiscal responsibility and and applying wisdom to the spending. It gets a little blurry for me as we go through this. One, uh, we had the initial proposal for the city tax, the sales tax be raised and so that we could see what the community thought about it, and they could make the decision in an election in the voting time. Then we came back and at the next meeting, uh, the the vote was to raise the taxes because we absolutely needed it. And now here we are, it is at a town hall meeting where it's absolutely ad- advocacy from the city council that we must have this sales tax increase. It's it's absolutely necessary. So it's been an interesting journey to watch that process. But in that, I feel like a town hall, and obviously it's not the whole town hanging out in the hall, but I feel like it would have been um, a good thing to to have more of the brainstorming and less of the city council advocating for their position. So that's just my general thing for if you're going to advertise a town hall, do it as a town hall, and if you're going to advertise a work session or a city council meeting, advertise it as that. But um, going forward, I'm in hope, I have a hope that taking a look at things like properties and taking a look at things like how the services are being managed, how equipment is being utilized and what our assets are. I'm hopeful about all of those things. And again, I appreciate the city manager driving you in that path. I would like to see that the city's management uh demonstrates and models that accountability and effectiveness prior to the residents and the guests to this community being asked to pick up the slack. So I know the slack is big, and it is because those continual approvals of expenses occurred over many years. And yet, uh, now we're jumping so fast that we're gonna tax our community to solve the problem before we take the time to truly uh implement change. We're talking about implementing change. And your city manager is doing a great job to say, you know, before you approve anything, let's look at the impacts of it. But um, I think you're you're jumping a step ahead to ask your visitors, your businesses, your community members to pick up the slack uh before you've had opportunity for your city government to demonstrate uh, what can be done as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. I do, I just want to say I do disagree a little bit with her comment on the the town hall style. If we did have more community here, we would obviously had to do a lot less talking, uh, and more residents could have done a lot more talking, so. Um, again, on a, it's not like a typical works, I mean, uh, work session or council meeting where we've limited folks to three minutes. Everyone, I I feel got their say tonight without, you know, no one was cut off. And and I went back and forth a multitude of times asking for additional comment or letting folks speak. So that's where I I disagree with her assessment on the way the meeting was ran, so. With that being said, um, there are also some good points. I understand everyone's going to have a different point of view on this, so. Uh, appreciate her her comments. Heidi, anyone else um that wishes to speak online?
I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, well, we uh, we can bring it back. There's any closing comments from council here, and we can get it wrapped up before nine o'clock here tonight. John?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. This predicament started fifty five years ago. It didn't start in my term as a council member, started fifty, sixty, seventy years ago. Because this is Seldovia, you can do whatever you want, nobody cares. Nobody bothers. They did urban renewal and put a new sewer system and new water system in. There has been zero major maintenance on it in fifty five years, fifty six years now. And some of this overspending by the city council or the city has been, as you see in the six or seven wet patches or cold patches on the cement. As Mayor Campbell has found out, you dig down to work on your sewer line and it's on the other side of the road. So you have to dig the whole road up straight across. We've paid out money to private contractors to fix valves and whatnot underground. Because there has never been any maintenance saving. Money put aside to replace sewer and water line. So now we're his sitting here with a fifty six year old sewer and water system and a brand new, modern, high-tech water treatment facility that two years ago was putting several hundred thousand gallons a day out into the ground. And it cost money. So yes, we've overspent over the years. And now we have a new, modern, high-tech sewage treatment facility on the way that we can't say no to. It's going to happen, whether you like it or not. I don't have an option of saying no. We're being forced to have this stuff put in. Past years, it's been nothing done, nothing done. No money spent on this, no money spent on that. There was no money put a set aside for a new loader. There was no money put aside for a grader. Oh yeah, it's Caterpillar. It'll last for a hundred years. But they don't. And this summer tax is not just for a grader. It's for money to go into the maintenance department so they can fix sewer lines and water lines. And we won't have to, in buildings, and we won't have to pull more money out all the time. It's going into a fund to be used for other stuff besides a grader. But in the long run, it's going to take money to fix the problems of a fifty five year old, fifty six year old infrastructure. That's had very limited maintenance over the years. And it's going to cost more money, and yes, we have a lot of stuff to do to to encourage business here and the tax in the, will basically get us by for a little while, but it won't last forever. Things will have to improve and the community needs to grow. Otherwise, your basic triple what it costs this year and about five years, it's going to cost you about three times that much to operate. Lo and behold, we don't like change, so there's still going to be three hundred people here. Guess who's going to pay for it? So yes, change has to happen. And uh, I don't really care to raise taxes, but it's I think it's it's doable for a short term. Thank you.
Thank you, John. George?
Well, first off, the the sales tax does not tax businesses. The businesses collect the tax from their customers. The uh, their expendables come wholesale, I assume. Isn't that correct? Secondly, what what we're asking is, it seems to be almost insignificant. We're talking about a hundred dollar grocery bill goes up two bucks. I just can't see us squabbling over this too much. It's a tax, and that's a bad word. As far as the leadership of the council, I some people voted for me, so I'm sitting here and I take my responsibilities seriously. I went around and talked to a lot of people, did some research on road graders and sales taxes, and then I talked to the constituents to see what the, what was felt there. I came up with a position, and I'm putting that position forward for the rest of the folks to consider. I think that's my job. Anyways, uh, that's about all.
Thank you, George. Anyone else? Vivian?
In conclusion, we want to be out here at nine o'clock before nine. Okay. Well said, George. I, this is one component to fix issues that we see that we've identified. I like the conversation that's been, that we've had in this room. When we start doing budget and we're I like the conversation that's been, that we've had in this room. When we start doing budget and we're talking about, um, and actually when we have our land use, um, uh, meeting, I hope y'all show up for that. Um, talking about what direction we want to do, but this is one part that's going to hopefully fix an issue that we have going. And so I just hope the word gets out and people see it as a partial fix. And, um, and it, we need to do something. We can't just stay what we're doing right now. Uh, but I appreciate you all being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Anyone else? Rachel, give me the last word.
I can quote with the council members.
There you go, Harmony. Are you? Yep, go ahead, Harmony.
Uh, yeah, well, I actually did have a couple of things to say and I kind of just lost my train of thought there. Um, I think that everybody stated it pretty well. Uh, I like the ideas that our community members came in with. There's a lot of things that the council's been talking about for a while. Um, and I think that it's great to hear community members come in, reiterate the, reiterate those things and encourage you guys to keep coming. You know, these are open meetings. All of our council member, or all of our council meetings are open. And they should be attended by the public. They should be contributed to by the public. I think it's great for everybody who does come. That's wonderful. Thank you for the, uh, the excellent information. As always, Rachel, it's always an education. And we really appreciate all the work that you give to us all the time. You're amazing. Um, and the staff, the staff as a whole. I think that these are really hard steps to take, but you gotta take the hard steps before you get to the good times. So thank you guys for coming. Thank you to the council and to the mayor. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Harmony. Appreciate those words. Rachel, will you have the last word tonight?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would just like to, uh, touch on a sentiment that Christine shared as well as Laurel about, um, taxing in general. So it may appear that this is a quick and easy fix, but it's not easy. And, uh, just looking at the, um, twelve years of spending for the city, this is something that, um, perhaps there wasn't the willpower from the council um, and the staff to act, to propose something like this because it's not easy, um, to bring before the voters. So it's, uh, unfortunately too, I guess to touch on what Laurel was saying, um, us acting from the trenches because there hasn't been forward thinking or planning for the city and facilities. So it puts pressure on the current generations of Saldovians. Because if we don't do something now, then the future generations of Saldovians are going to receive less service than what the past and, and current generations are currently receiving. So it's more like what services do we want to continue on into the future? When we're operating from a reactionary place in the trenches and it almost feels like, um, the city's in a decline and we're running out of time. So I'm sorry that it may feel like it's an easy solution or something that doesn't necessarily feel thought out. Like the public would like to see or members of the public would like to see, uh, but the city has to look and explore all options in a multi-pronged approach um, in order to get us out of a deficit because we are eroding over time. And it makes for a very, um, uncertain future for the city. And so there will be really hard conversations coming up in the future about reductions in services. And it's not fun for the council to have to make those decisions on behalf of the community. It's not easy to be the ones that get the questions from the public, why are you guys doing this or what's going on? Um, so it's a volunteer, um, contribution on behalf of your whole community to be having these tough decisions. And I, um, I'm happy as well. Jordan, um, had said that he would be willing to, uh, meet with anyone who wanted to stop by the shop and talk about the grader. And I'd like to extend that same welcome. If anyone wants to understand the city's finances and why we have to consider something like this, I would first encourage you to read our audit statements and look at our budget documents, all of which are posted online. And then, uh, please call and set up a time to meet and ask your questions. And, um, as far as the sentiment about being unable to vote, I'm sorry, that's just based on where you live. And I can understand that sentiment immensely, uh, but you have to be a resident in order to comment or vote on services. So I'm sorry, as it's a probably, um, an odd feeling to be a business owner, but not a resident in the city limits. And I know that there's members of the community that have talked in the past about expanding boundaries in order so that there could be more participation. So that might be something on the table for the future as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rachel. Very eloquently said. So, all right, well, we, uh, this has been a good productive discussion. Appreciate all of the input from, uh, from all the community members, uh, that offered input tonight as well as some additional comments and thoughts, um, by council. So, um, as always, the staff did a great job in preparing the information. And, uh, yeah, I wish we would have had a little bit more public, um, uh, participation. I've certainly got an earful in the last, uh, over the last week here on, uh, on the, uh, proposition. So, um, that's going to be on the ballot. So we'll see how, how that goes. Uh, basically you have to make your own decision, uh, when, when you go to cast your vote and what, you know? You basically have to understand what, what that vote means and what you're willing to live with. So, um, I won't advocate any, you know, for anything more or less than that. So, but, um, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. Um, and it was a good, good discussion and we'll be talking about it again, I'm sure. So, um, election's coming up. We've got, uh, council seats and we've got a proposition on the ballot. So be sure to remind folks that they can vote. Heidi, you want to give a little spiel on the absentee and the all that stuff?
Yep, absentee is available. The city office, um, main hours are ten to three, but we are there from eight thirty to five. So if you're not able to come in between ten to three to vote, um, pretty typically I'm there or Diane's there till three. I'm normally there till five afterwards. Um, and Jan is also schooled in, um, being able to help, uh, administer a ballot. So, uh, certainly come in if you can't make it for election day. Or there's also an option, you can, um, fill out a ballot application and mail it in or email it to me. And we will mail you a ballot, um, through the mail and you can mail it back. Um, or there's even a special needs process for people that can't come out of their homes and mail isn't it maybe not an option that they will, are, or that's as easy to them if they have a representative that comes into the city, they can sign out a ballot. Um, that representative takes it to them and then brings it back. So, uh, plenty of options. Absentee is open right now. Until October fourth, you can't vote absentee on the day of elections, which will be in here, October fifth, seven AM to eight PM. Um, and if you have any questions about elections, please give me a call and I'd be happy to fill you in on whatever those are.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate that. All right. We'll go ahead and wrap that up. That will include, conclude our town hall tonight. And again, thanks everyone for participating and have a good evening.